Okay, tonight is March 19, 2019. It's 7:06 PM and we're calling the Planning Commission meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Chair Mason.
Here.
Vice Chair Legasse.
Here.
Commissioner Lathene.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
And absent is our newest, one of our newest commissioners, Commissioner Val Morgan, and excused absent.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Johnson, would you lead us in the pledge?
With pleasure.
And I just wanted to take a moment to welcome our newest Commissioner, Tom Hamilton. Welcome.
Thank you.
And tonight's your first night here, so let us know if we can be of any assistance.
Thank you, I will.
And our other new Commissioner, Valentine Morgan, is unfortunately not here, but I guess we'll meet him at the next meeting, so thank you. The second item, or the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. There are no minutes tonight to approve, so we'll move on to number two, which is public comment on items not on the agenda. Looks like these are all related to the cell towers. Are there any general public comments not related to any items on the agenda? Seeing as how there is none, we'll go on to the announcement of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts tonight? The next item are public hearings. We'll start with 8:50 Cherry Avenue.
My name is Ami Upadia, Planning Department staff. For the first item tonight, the applicant is requesting for a use permit to allow alcohol beverage sales with type 41 ABC license in conjunction with a cafe within an existing corporate office building. Aramark Services is the applicant and Walmart Storing is the owner. The subject site is located in the Bay Hill Office Park at the corner of Cherry Avenue and Bay Hill Drive in the planned development zoning district. The proposal would allow the operator to sell beer and wine for consumption on premises within the dining area and in the outdoor seating area. The existing Walmart office cafe is approximately 9,200 square feet, including the kitchen, food service areas, storage spaces, and interior seating area. The interior dining area has seating for 333 people and with 103 tables. The outdoor seating area is 5,120 square feet with 19 tables and 76 seats. The hours of operation will be 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. The existing cafe is permitted use within the planned development zoning district, therefore Planning Commission's approval is only required for the sale of beer and wine. If the Planning Commission approves the application, the applicant will also be required to obtain a type 41 liquor license from the California Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control. Police Department has also reviewed and not opposed to the application. If any operational issues arise in the future related to this use permit, the Community Development Director has the ability to call the item back to the Planning Commission. The notice was sent to all property owners within 300 feet of the subject site on March 6. No comments have been received as of writing this report. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
And any questions from the Commission? So I do have, I do have just a couple of questions. For the cafe, I'm just curious because someone posted on one of the social media sites that Walmart is leaving. Is that, does anybody know, is that true? Just because this is the Walmart Cafe that's being approved?
Darcy Smith, Community and Economic Development Director. As of tonight, we know of no information related to Walmart.com vacating their existing office building in town.
Okay, great. So is the cafe owned by Walmart?
The building is owned by Walmart, and I believe they contract with a separate vendor who is here tonight, represents Aramark, so if you have questions for him, he can answer questions on behalf of the vendor.
Okay, great. I have a couple more questions, but why doesn't that, does applicant want to say anything before we open up for public comment? Hi, how are you?
Good evening. My name is Steve Rawlings, and I'm here on behalf of Aramark Services. Aramark is the actual, you know, contract vendor for Walmart Corporation. Walmart does own the building and they occupy all of the space in the building there. This actually houses more of their online, their online team, so it doesn't do much in the actual stores. It handles the online, so it needs to be kind of in the tech capital of the world. Anyway, you know, for the record, we do concur with the staff recommendation and do agree to all of the conditions of approval, and I'm certainly here to answer the questions you might have to the best of my abilities.
Is the, is this cafe open to the public?
It is to the, to the extent that you, when you come into the building, like many corporations, there's a security personnel there, and you have to have kind of business and a reason to be there in the building. But if I was there having a meeting with somebody, and after the meeting I wanted to go down and have lunch, I'm certainly able to do so.
Okay. Hold on, I have a couple of questions. In regards, I guess this is going back to, well, let me ask applicant first. So on the menu on Exhibit E, it says, there's a grab and go menu, and it says that the cafe is open from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Is the request to have alcohol until 10:00 PM, and just why the discrepancy?
Yes. So let me just kind of explain a little bit of the operation there. Yes, it does open up at 7:00 AM. There's, there's no real intention of selling alcohol at 7:00 AM, but we would like the ability to be open until, you know, 10:00 PM. Walmart, like a lot of corporations, from time to time have the need to have evening events, and in fact, they would like to use this space a little bit more often. A lot of times they're having to go off property to kind of have, I don't know, employee or vendor type of meetings that sometimes take place in the evenings and the late afternoons. And I believe that they would like to start utilizing this particular space. They have a nice pleasant patio, and they're not utilizing it right now other than just to kind of, kind of eat. And so it's a space that they, they would like to, you know, for the record, the application with the ABC confines alcohol all into that cafe there. You can just grab a beer and go, go back to your desk. It is a corporation, so they do have some policy, internal policies and procedures, but it's a nice amenity that they would like to be able to have. This is pretty commonplace nowadays, and especially up here in Silicon Valley. I have personally done similar applications for several facilities for LinkedIn, as well as Navidea Corporation. They opened up a big, new corporate facility in, I believe it's in Santa, Santa Clara, actually. So this is kind of a, somewhat of a common thing for these kind of corporate businesses.
Okay. And then back to Director Smith, whether, are other, are any of the other office buildings serving beer and wine in the complex right now?
I don't know of any off the top of my head.
And then regarding on page two, I'm sorry, I was reading it on my laptop, so I've got my notes in a separate piece of paper, but on page two of the staff report, there is a comment that says that this could be brought, brought back. The Development Director can bring this back to planning if there are, you know, any circumstances later on wherein the license can be revoked. And I just want to understand that better. What would that process look like, or what would be the circumstances under which that might happen?
So because the alcohol permit is regulated by, primarily by ABC, Alcohol Beverage Control, they do have the ability to inspect the premises and ensure that the, the operation is in compliance with their regulations. We typically only would do an investigation if we received a complaint relative to lack of compliance with any of the, the conditions of approval of this use permit. But if we received any information from ABC, or we opened a code enforcement case and could confirm they were not in compliance with the conditions of approval, then we would bring it back for you, for review.
Okay.
But I would, I would also emphasize that ABC has the ability to revoke the license if there are violations under their operating procedures. For example, the vendor stated that the alcohol can't be taken outside of a certain area. So if, for example, the alcohol is taken outside that area, then ABC would govern that.
I think what I'm looking at, and just on a, in a more aggregate scale, and this is something I'm, I understand that the, this Commission cannot consider, but for the city to consider, because this is not going to City Council, is that if, since the specific plan is happening now and businesses are building up and rebuilding, if more businesses request licenses, will that then be taking business from the smaller businesses that are located within the San Bruno vicinity? So just something, again, that I know that we cannot consider, but something for staff to consider for the, for future approvals. One other thing that I noticed in Exhibit C that we're not in the other two approvals was that management and staff are going to be, they're going to be trained apparently on this license, but the other two are not being required to, and I don't know if that's just because that's something that was offered or volunteered from the current company. This is Exhibit C.
So Exhibit C was submitted directly by the applicant, but it's my understanding that this sort of employee training, because it's ABC approved, that it is fairly common. I don't know if it's standard relative to ABC operational requirements.
Okay.
But again, it gets at what I said earlier, which is that ABC has separate operational requirements that they will impose through the ABC licensing, and what we impose are just relative to the condition of approval.
Okay. Okay. See if there's any public comment. Is there any public comment on this item?
Russell Stein, Reed Avenue. I'm not necessarily sure this is a great idea, letting people have alcohol from the, from possibly 7:00 in the morning to 10 o'clock at night, sitting possibly two doors down in their desk. Also, I think that we're already at the point where Google, Facebook, and dot com companies make it so convenient for people to stay inside that building that nobody actually comes out into our community, so I think it's a really, really bad idea and dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item?
Hi, name is Trista. I understand that you also question possibly on the other businesses, and my concern would be if this is approved, are we setting a precedent on every single business entity that comes in that we would have to at that point approve their facilities to offer alcohol? And I also, I am with the gentleman, the comment that he made. These large businesses provide everything to their employees, therefore there is no need for them to actually leave the premises. So that is a concern, but my, my concern is that we're going to be setting a precedent that we would have to approve then every other that comes before you that requests alcohol use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Perez-Vargas. I'm also concerned that Google and the larger companies are keeping their employees in. We have a struggling downtown, and we would love to see some of those employees spill over. There's some really good restaurants, they're, they can have alcohol there, and they can benefit San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other public comment? You'll, you'll have a chance to speak.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Simon Mazzola. Pretty simple comment. 7:00 in the morning is a bit early to start drinking. I don't know what the regs are in San Bruno, but it would surprise me if a normal liquor license can start serving in a restaurant that early. So whatever we would normally do, I can't see why we would extend that to earlier hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Steve Rawlings again. Just, I wanted to just add a couple of additional points for your consideration. One, we don't, we certainly don't need to serve alcohol at 7:00 AM. We can move that to 11:00, 11:00 AM. Yeah, we have no intentions of serving that, just kind of match the hours of the, of the current, you know, food service there. The request is, is being primarily driven so that we can start utilizing this, this particular space more often. It's, it's, you know, we have a great number of, there's a great number of employees that leave every day from the campus there to, to go, you know, patronize other establishments on a very, very regular basis. Also too, it's, it is, you know, important for this corporation as long, as well as other corporations to, you know, provide amenities, you know, to their employees. It's not necessarily designed to have people go down there and, you know, consume during their break hours and so on and so forth. As I said, it's, it's an amenity that we'd like to be able to offer, and then again, utilize it for, you know, events and things that we're, that they're currently not using it for, so with that. Also too, the ABC training is something that, you know, has been operated up by us. Aramark is a very large company that provides these kind of services worldwide. The ABC training is, is a pretty comprehensive training. It, you know, talks to servers about, you know, proper ID checking, as well as making sure that they understand that, you know, you can't over-serve and signs of intoxication. So it's a really great program. Other municipalities condition all alcohol licenses to do this. This is something that's, that's standard for Aramark. It's great to have a third-party person train your employees, and it is just, just an extra level of, you know, protection to make sure that this doesn't become anything more than what it's intended to be. And I think that you'll find it will be an extremely responsible provider of alcohol.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Through the chair. It's, it's my understanding that this is something that we can't consider in whether or not we're going to grant this, grant this approval, but I do also, one of the notes that I took down was I, I do think that for the future in considering the development of the Bay Hill specific plan, I think we need to do a number of things to encourage, like, like our friends were saying, employees to come out of their buildings and to patronize Bay Hill and downtown businesses. And I think that one of the benefits that they have right now is that if they do want to go out and have a glass of wine and, and have their lunch, they can, they can walk right across the street and do that. So I, I support the chair's suggestion that we do consider that as we work more on the Bay Hill plan.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Regarding the, the public comment about setting a precedent for other businesses to automatically be able to serve alcohol, I would, I would assume, just based on the fact that there are three such requests on the agenda tonight, that any applicant still has to go through the entire process, and that the, the decision we make here does not affect anything subsequent.
That's correct, and I would just point out the findings, which are very site-specific. And so every time we get an application for a conditional use permit, we develop the findings, and we take into consideration the location and the specific nature of the business. I will emphasize, this one is, is a little bit more unique in nature, so I just want to emphasize, I don't see you setting any precedent here, just because this is sort of a unique situation, and I, we don't have any submitted that are similar to this. We typically see them with restaurants.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I was just reminded, for the record, that we have closed public comment, so, okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Hamilton, if you have any other questions.
That was it, thank you.
Through the chair. Several things come to mind. One is that it is a very common practice in today's tech world to provide amenities, and it makes employees very happy to be with a particular company with certain amenities. It does impact our community in some way or another, however, I think that, that we're here, you know, we're here to see this as a, as an application for a license for ABC and all of the other items. Maybe we can expand that to a discussion at a different level. I happen to think differently from that point of view than my colleagues, commissioners. I think that, I don't believe that adding this application's request would impact our community. I don't think that people are just going to get up and leave because they want a glass of wine. I think that there are lots of things that, that people leave their work premises for various reasons, you know, errands and, and different types of foods, and just a variety of their own reasons. So I, I do support the application, and I, I also think that limiting the hours could be a consideration. However, sometimes being, I'm an employer, was an employer, I should say, and there are things you want to do for your employees. You want to have special events and brunches and different types of things for your employees, and you want to give them every opportunity, and I don't see this application as a way to encourage intoxication, but a way to provide another, another amenity. And so if you wanted to have an event, and you wanted to provide a brunch of some sort, sometimes you have different types of beverages in that area. So I don't want to put that restriction on the applicant. Maybe it's not 7:00, they think that brunches oftentimes start earlier. So I want us to, you know, I'd like us to have an open mind to think about that, and that our desire to have people go into the community, I think, is very valid and very important. However, it cannot be at the expense of, from my perspective, of limiting someone for wanting to provide an amenity, and I'm not indicating that alcohol is the, the amenity, but it is what's before us. And so there are other requests besides this one, and I, and I think this is managed by a company that is experienced and knowledgeable and knows exactly what they're doing. So for those reasons, I have, I support the project.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Through the chair. It's a question for staff. I just want to confirm that the, the only items that are applicable to the Planning Commission's decisions are the ones for which we, we are required to make findings, the five different findings. So while issues that don't pertain to these may be important and might be considered by, by staff or by the City Council, as I understand it, we cannot involve that in our decisions. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
But I have made a note about examining this more as part of the Bay Hill specific plan, which would have a different set of, potentially a different set of regulations for that area.
Good, thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the Commission? Any motions?
Through the chair.
Yes.
There is no other discussion? I move that we, oh, sorry, wrong paper. I move that the Planning Commission approved use permit 18-029, based on the findings of facts 1 through 5 and conditions of approval 1 through 12.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Any abstentions? No? So the ayes have it. We will move on to item number two. Okay, this is for 533 San Mateo Avenue.
For this project, the applicant is requesting for a use permit to allow alcohol beverage sales with type 42 ABC license in conjunction with an art studio named Peanut Palette. Stacy Warren is the applicant. The subject site is located in the San Bruno Park First Edition track within the central business district. Drinking establishment is permitted at the ground floor with a conditional use permit within the central business district. Use permit is only required to serve alcohol in conjunction with food at the art studio. The Peanut Palette is a paint and ship franchisee that offers a group of painting lessons accompanied by food, beer, wine, and other beverages. The two to three hours of painting class, classes would be offered the adults over 21 years with a maximum of 42 customers per in-studio event. The hours of operation would be 5:00 PM to 10:30 PM on Thursday through Saturday. The business would also offer hosting studio private parties to corporate, corporate team building, and customized paint parties and regular charity painting events. Police Department has reviewed the application, is not opposed to the application. If any additional issues arise in the future related to this use permit, Community Development Director has the authority to call the item back to the Planning Commission. The legal notice was sent to all property owners within 300 feet of subject site on March 6, 2019. No comments have been received as of writing this staff report. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? No? Okay. Does the applicant want to speak?
Hello, everyone. I'm Stacy Warren. I'm the applicant. First, I want to thank you for putting me on the agenda this evening. My business is a Pinos Palette Paint and Sip franchise, like Ami said. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the Paint and Sip concept, but basically you can look through my event calendar, pick out a piece of art that you want to make, and you can go to the event, and there will be an art instructor there to help you create your artwork. And so once you come to create your painting, there's three rules at Pinos Palette. One, paint. Two, drink. And three, have fun. So rule number two would be a little difficult without a beer and wine license, so that's why I'm here in front of you this evening. If you've never attended one of these events before, it's really fun, and when I went to the first one in San Diego, that was what made me love it so much that I wanted to bring it home to my hometown. So a little bit more about me. My parents moved to San Bruno when I was five, and I've lived here most of my life. So this is my hometown, and currently I live with my husband and son over on Acacia, near San Bruno Park, and I'd love to contribute to our city by bringing a high-quality Pinos Palette franchise to our lovely little hometown. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to open this up for public comment. Does anybody have any comments on this item? Okay, seeing as how there is no public comment, I'm going to close public comment. Does the Commissioner, do any Commissioners have questions or comments?
Through the chair, I have a comment. I think this is exactly the type of, of business that we're trying to attract into our downtown. This type of service-oriented, community-minded, community-focused business is perfect for San Mateo Avenue.
Thank you.
And I think we should approve the permit.
Thank you. Any other?
Through the chair, just have a question. It's actually for the applicant, that your, if you want to step back to the microphone? It indicates that your hours of operation is from 5:00 to 10:30, so you don't intend to have any daytime events, just evening events?
So the franchise recommends that you kind of build up demand from those times, so just having three events a week, and then once you start getting to capacity on those classes, then you offer more. But I, I mean, I read through all the paperwork and stuff, so I know I have to talk to Darcy if I want to have, it should be open to corporate events, so I'll let you know anytime I have corporate events, when they would be, and, or, or private parties. It should be open for private parties, so, but I mean, those would be, I don't, I don't foresee there being late. But I mean, those would be, I don't foresee there being late hours. Like, I'm thinking like lunch, afternoon, those kind of hours.
I'm not really commenting on the 10:30, but the 5:00. So if you're going to have afternoon hours, would you not want to extend that to start an earlier time than starting at 5:00?
The franchise just recommends that you, so I don't know when the most optimal evening hours for the classes are, since they're two to three hours, so depending on the complexity of the painting. So I mean, I think most studios have 7:00 to 9:00, and then they open it up a little bit early so that people can come in, like, you know, sit down, put their coats and purses away, whatever, and then there's some time after the event so people can take pictures and post them and, you know, have their last drink and then go home. But I don't know, I mean, if 6:00 to 8:00 would be better for our community, or, you know, I wasn't exactly sure when.
Well, I typically don't look at expanding someone's hours, but I was thinking about, since it's a new business, that you'd have to come back to the staff. And I'm thinking that maybe applying for an earlier time and ending whatever time you choose, but, you know, thinking about an afternoon time through an evening time. But I'm just really posing the question. I'm not making a recommendation or...
Well, so I don't know, I haven't hired any staff yet, and I still haven't, I mean, I sent my building permit in, and there's so much I still need to do. But I don't know if I'm going to be able to have enough staff to, I still work. So I work at SAP, I don't know. And then, so I'm going to keep my job so that I can still pay rent while I build up.
I can tell that you're really trying hard to figure all these pieces out.
I am trying so hard.
Because, and again, I'm not promoting that you start earlier, but if you, you don't have to be open those hours. You can indicate your hours when you choose to. So I'm just going back to staff.
Sure.
Thinking that that might be a one-time, get in here, give an opportunity to your business to be successful and not having to come back, and it's a good use of time, unless you think otherwise, Director Smith and staff.
So we were just responding to the applicant's proposal.
Of course.
If, I would agree that if you think there's an earlier start time, it would just be better to memorialize that now in your approvals. You could move it up to whatever you decide, assuming the applicant would agree to it tonight. The language in the condition of approval does allow the director to authorize changes, but I would say that that's sort of something we would just not want to do on a normal basis. So I think it's reasonable, and we certainly don't have an issue with it opening earlier. While these are in other communities, so we did a little bit of research, and there typically are not police issues with these, and even starting earlier wouldn't necessarily cause an issue. It's typically the really late alcohol sales that cause the most police-related complaints. But we don't have a problem here. Just make it as part of the motion to change that. I would agree, it's probably better to err on the side of being more flexible, just because having worked with Ms. Warren on her application and trying to support local businesses, it's just good to give them some flexibility when they're starting a new business venture.
Exactly. So I would recommend something of a 2:00 to 11:00 spot, but that's certainly, if you want to comment on that.
Sure. Well, just, I've also looked at a lot of the other studios, and the other classes they tend to have start at 1:00. So if you wanted to be like 12:30, then, I mean, I don't know when I would have those, but that matches the other studios, like Alameda and Livermore.
I think it's a business. It just gives you the flexibility to be creative. And as a business owner myself, there are times, there are peaks and valleys in business, and there are different trends in business, and there's also recessions. And it would be important to give you the latitude to be able to be creative in those areas, because the last thing we want is for business not to be successful in our community. We want to support that. So I make a recommendation that it would be 12:00 to 11:00, if that helps you be...
Okay. And then, like, not just those three days, like, the other days too, I guess?
12:00 to 11:00, seven days a week.
Thank you. Anything else should I say here?
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
No. I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Hamilton said. This is very inviting to the San Bruno community. It's something that you can do after dinner. Now that we're expanding this to 12:00, someone can go to breakfast and go afterwards and actually do something on San Mateo Avenue. So it's really exciting. Thank you for investing in your own hometown.
Thank you.
With that said, does anybody want to start the motion and with any recommendations?
I motion that we approve use permit UP 19-001 based on findings number one through five and conditions of approval one through 12, as amended, as recommended by Commissioner Johnson, allowing hours of operation of 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM, seven days a week, understanding that the applicant can choose to operate for shorter hours than this.
Okay. Somebody want to second the motion?
I'll second.
Right. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? No? So the motion is approved. Congratulations. So we will move on to the next item, which is the, give me one second, I know it's J.C. Bruno. It is 741 San Mateo Avenue.
Good evening again. For this project, the applicant is requesting for a use permit to allow alcohol beverages sales with type 41 ABC license in conjunction with a restaurant doing business as a J.C. Bruno. Hilmar Morales is the applicant and owner. The proposal would allow the operator to sell beer and wine for consumption on premises within the dining area. The existing commercial space is approximately 4,622 square feet with a dining area that is approximately 1,700 square feet with seating for 64 people. The remaining 2,922 square feet is dedicated to kitchen, cook line service, storage, restroom, and parking space. Alcohol sales would only be available to diners at the restaurant, and the hours of operation will be 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Tuesday through Saturday. The existing restaurant is permitted use within the commercial zoning district, therefore, planning commission's approval is only required for the sale of beer and wine. If the planning commission approves this application, the applicant will also be required to obtain a type 41 liquor license from the California Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control. All the times, the service of alcohol beverages will be identical to the food service. Police department has reviewed the application and is not opposed to the application. If any operational issues arise in the future related to the use permit, the community development director has the authority to call the item back to the commission, to the planning commission. Legal notice was sent to the all property owners within 300 feet of the subject site. No comments have been received as of writing this report. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? No?
Thank you.
Okay. Does the applicant want to say anything?
My name is Al Tovar. I am not J.C. I'm his maître d' and he's one of my best friends and the godfather to his son. We're looking to get a license to serve wine because it complements the restaurant and the foods that he serves. He's a chef. He's not considered a cook. He studied abroad. He's from Peru, and he decided to settle here with his family several years ago. His son goes to cappuccino, and he's a pillar in our community. So that's what we're looking for, to have our wine so we can complement our food. It is a French cuisine and a California cuisine. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Are you still reservations only?
No, we're walk-ins now. We emphasize on reservations only, but the word got out, so everybody's knocking on our doors, so we're letting everybody in.
That's great. Every time I walk by, it's packed.
We might extend, right now, we're Tuesdays through Saturdays, but the way things are going, we might extend those days.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and open this up for public comment, and then we'll come back to you if we have any questions. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Johnson, go ahead, before we open up for public comment.
The applicant's comments first, questions first, or do you prefer afterwards?
I guess since he's about to sit down, why don't we do public comment first?
Okay.
And then we'll call you back up.
Okay.
Okay, so we're opening this up for public comment.
I'm Stephen Seymour, and I just want to, like the applicant before this one, these are two really welcomed additions to San Mateo Avenue. We had the opportunity to go eat there this past weekend, and for anyone who hasn't gone to J.C. Bruno, make a reservation. It's really something that's different than what we have now in the city. And it's a husband-and-wife team. They do a very good job of greeting the people that come into the restaurant. The food is fabulous, and they're a really welcome addition. So, I mean, we need wine. We brought our own bottle of wine. We'd like to be able to purchase there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Yes, I am a San Bruno resident, and my husband and I have also have gone to J.C. Bruno, and we love the name, because we also have a four-legged kid named Bruno. But we've been waiting for a restaurant with this type of food. It is amazing. It's so welcoming, and the chef also comes and greets the guests. So please, please, we definitely want J.C. Bruno to thrive in San Bruno, and we don't have to drive far. It's so amazing. So please, please, thank you so much for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you.
Sandra Peres Vargas. I also went to the restaurant this last week. It was amazing, and for us, it's, you know, a walk away. The food was wonderful. We brought our own wine, and that was awesome. But it would be really great to have them help us pair the wines to the food, or the beers to the food, because, you know, you never know what you're going to eat that night, right? So I would totally recommend they have their license. It's such an amazing addition. This is what we've been waiting for. So thanks, guys.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? No? So with that said, I'm going to close public comment, and if I can, invite the applicant back up. And Commissioner Johnson had a question.
Yes, Mr. Tovar. The question is, you're up here for ABC license.
Correct.
I'm going to ask the same question about expanding your hours. I mean, you're 5:00 to 11:00 and five days a week. And it's probably going to be a question for our community director, but would you, if it was possible, would you be interested in expanding, I mean, on the record, longer hours and more days? You don't have to have a limitation to what appears to be a very successful environment.
Yes. Well, that's our goal. We're starting off slow, and eventually, we want to open for lunch, and eventually open up for at least six days a week.
I think that some applicants may be under the assumption that you have to start slow and then increase, or you can ask for the moon to a certain extent, right? And you can use, within that, those parameters, you can use the amount of hours and the amount of days. It would be your choice, how you post it, how you provide information to the community. But if that was a possibility, would you want that to be considered?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
I would certainly get that clarification from our community director.
Okay.
And it's not on the application, but I would want to wish a word appropriately.
Oh, great. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any questions from any of the other commissioners?
Through the chair?
Yes.
Do you have a question for our community director? So, Mrs. Smith, is that something that we can do at this particular time, or does that require a different step or procedure?
No, I would recommend you make this as broad as you feel, based on the information you received tonight. I don't believe we've had any major police issues with restaurants in the downtowns that would lead me and the staff to make any different recommendations relative to the findings. So I think it's just better to allow the broad, especially days of the week and hours. You might want to ask the applicant if they ever envision opening for lunch, just because then you might shift it a little bit earlier.
Exactly. That's what I'm thinking.
But I would agree that the conditions of approval should reflect sort of where the business wants to be in a few years, just because these are binding and run with the property, basically for the life of the restaurant. So it could be 20 years, 30 years, that there's a restaurant in this space with an alcohol-related conditional use permit. And I just want to emphasize that we do have the ability, if there's any nuisance or major issues, to bring this back for you for consideration. But I just think that that's a really rare thing, especially with a higher-end restaurant. If it was a bar that didn't serve a lot of food, I think we would have maybe a different recommendation. But again, on the first item, I said, every case, we take different circumstances into account based on the findings. And so I think this case does warrant the broader hours and seven days a week.
I would agree. When I'm hearing patients indicating that they're bringing their own liquor, it makes sense that, yeah, we look at that. So thank you for the clarification. So I will make that recommendation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Apologies.
That's okay. So I would just finalize my comments that I would make the recommendation that the restaurant operates seven days a week, and maybe the, let's see, the hours they have now, let me just, 11:00. I would probably add that till 10:00 in the morning, or even, actually, we might even want to do breakfast, so maybe it's a 7:00 to 11:00.
Similar to the Walmart one. Yeah, they serve at 7:00. Okay. Any other questions on this item?
Through the chair. I just wanted to say you have a great-looking menu. You should have put prices on it. It looks really good.
Any other questions? No? No? Okay, so I do have a question, and this is just, again, long-term thinking. I'm just curious as far, and this might be a question for staff, but on page three, number one, I'm just curious as to how you define premises, and I just want to kind of expand that a little bit. The location you have is great. You did a beautiful job in the remodel.
Thank you.
And the reason I say that is because the parking space you have is also a beautiful location. And as we talk about revitalizing San Bruno Downtown, it is a perfect location for a live Cuban band, a live salsa band on a Sunday afternoon.
Correct.
So when we talk about the premises, does the premises include the potential to serve alcohol outside if there's a special event?
Well, that's down the road. We do have that on a plan, on the books, and we do plan to do something in the summertime. If it goes according to plan and we get busy, yes, we do plan to go outside and doing a different kind of a venue, different kind of a menu, where you have maybe oysters, barbecued oysters with a band. But as far as a band, we're talking about a guitar. We're not talking a full-blown salsa band or something like that.
Right.
To fit the venue, to fit the French feel.
Right. And is that, so I'm looking at Director Smith, is that something that we should talk about now?
So the premises right now are defined as the restaurant inside, and I'll explain why. The, if you look at your site plan, which is sheet A1 of your packet, the area adjacent to the restaurant is actually required parking and also required ADA access into the building. And so when staff reviewed the building permit and the improvement plans for this, we wanted to ensure compliance with ADA and accessibility. And we did have conversations with the restaurant owner and the contractor about potentially using that outdoor space for either outdoor seating or music. But at this point, given that there are requirements for the accessible parking and the two stalls that you see on the site plan, that area can't be blocked. So if it were to be cordoned off and a band and tables put out there, it would interfere with accessible parking and accessible access, and that is not something the city can approve. So right now, the alcohol conditional use permit is just inside the building.
Okay. And is that something that we can expand the definition of, since it's already known that the parking is a requirement, in case the city in the future provides a parking lot or something that we don't have now, then the premises definition is already established?
So accessible parking is governed by laws beyond the city, and typically, what I've seen is that they just get more and more strict over time. And typically, what I've seen is that they just get more and more strict over time and the city doesn't have the ability to approve exceptions for that. Or if we do, they're very limited in scope. But at this point, there's no ability to accommodate any outside seating or use of that outdoor space because it interferes with that requirement. So, at this point, based on the application before you and the site plan and other requirements, the alcohol sales are limited to, alcohol consumption that would be approved by this conditional use permit is limited to inside the building.
Okay.
And I will say that if the applicant did want to change that in the past, in the future, for whatever reason, the first step is to talk to Alcohol Beverage Control because they do have really strict rules about outdoor patios. You might envision like a fence, for example, because they just want to make sure that alcohol doesn't go beyond a controlled area. And so, if that does happen in the future, I think it's, it would be done through an amendment to this conditional use permit, which would come back before you.
Okay. And then the other question I had is on exhibit C. There was, this is a letter from the applicant and I noticed that the, two, three, four, the fourth paragraph, you say, "We offer no entertainment or late hours." And just because it's, this is part of the record, I wanted to make sure that if you do want to offer entertainment, now is a great time to correct that on the record.
Yeah.
Because I think that would be wonderful.
Why don't we do that? Yes. Yes, definitely.
Can you expand a little bit on that?
Well, we're looking to bring in a guitar, a Spanish guitar, within the facilities, but not at this time.
Okay.
If we can do that in the future. Right now, we're more concentrating on building the business more than bringing in entertainment. Again, that's down the road.
Okay.
Unless we can put it in the record now and we can bring it, we can bring music, but that would be, again, an acoustic guitar.
Okay, great. Okay? Great. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Thank you again. Does somebody want to motion for this item?
Through the chair. I'd like to move to approve application UP-1-9-003, subject to findings one through five and conditions of approval one through 12, with the amendment to increase the hours to be seven days a week, Sunday through Saturday, I guess, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Okay, second? Okay, all, every?
Yes, add entertainment.
And to add entertainment? And to correct that?
Sorry. The entertainment is governed by a separate municipal code chapter and it's not to be considered as part of this conditional use permit. It's a separate entertainment permit. So, if you can kindly strike that, that'd be great.
Okay. Okay, so, stricken? Stricken? And I think just for the record, we just come, it's actually exhibit C that's being corrected. So, in the future, they can, the applicant can come directly to the city to work out the entertainment portion. Okay. So, right now, the motion is for Sunday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And I believe Commissioner Hamilton second?
I did.
Okay. Everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Any abstentions? No? Great. The ayes carry it and congratulations and thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is D, 500 Sylvan Avenue. And before you start, I just wanted to commend staff. I noticed that all three of the applications were consistent. So, the issue we had last time of inconsistency was not an issue here. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you and good evening. My name is Matt Newbaum and I'm associate planner with the San Bruno Planning Department. There'll be a total of two presentations tonight. I'll provide a high-level overview of all the different aspects of the proposal. The project architect will go into a bit more detail regarding the architectural elements of the proposal. At the very end is when we will field questions from the planning commission at the conclusion of that second presentation, essentially the project architect's presentation. With that, I will jump into my presentation. The project before us tonight calls for the construction of a three-story residential building located at 500 Sylvan Avenue. The current zoning designation is R2 low-density residential. The proposal is located within the transit corridors plan area and there's five character areas within the transit corridor plan area. This is located in the CBD, Central Business District character area. The site itself also has a general plan land use designation of transit-oriented development. The site is .17 acres in total area, which equates to 7,364 square feet. It's located on the northwest corner of Sylvan Avenue and Green Avenue, located one block west of San Mateo Avenue. Property is currently developed with a vacant building that has historically been used as a dental office. Site's remained vacant for several years at this point. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing structure and in its place, construct a nine-unit residential building. The unit breakdown consists of six two-bedroom units. Those units would be located on the second and third floor levels, two one-bedroom units. Those one-bedroom units would also be located on the second and third floor levels and then one studio unit, which would be located on the ground floor level. A total of 14 parking spaces would be provided with this project. Access to those 14 parking spaces would be achieved via two curb cuts, one from Sylvan Avenue and one from Green Avenue. Additional discussion regarding parking-related matters will be covered later on in my presentation. As proposed, the project requires a zoning district amendment, a planned development permit, an architectural review permit, and a conditional use permit. The zoning district amendment is to change the existing zoning, the R2 low-density zoning, to a PD planned development district. As previously noted, the project is located within the transit corridors plan, Central Business District character area. However, the underlying zoning was never updated to be consistent with the transit corridors plan. Therefore, there is a, there's a need to rezone this from R2 to PD as the underlying zoning doesn't currently allow for the proposed project. Whenever you establish a planned development district, a planned development permit is required and we have that before us tonight as well. An architectural review permit is required because we have a new building that would be visible from the public right-of-way. And lastly, the conditional use permit is required to establish a ground floor unit, a residential unit on the ground floor. This type of project does require review from the Architectural Review Committee and Planning Commission and ultimate approval from the city council. We've been working with the applicant for a number of years now regarding this proposal that's before you tonight. In fact, the applicant formally initiated the transit corridor plan pre-submital process in January 20, January of 2017. Specifically, January 27, 2017 is when that application was filed with our office. The intent of that pre-submital process is to receive feedback from staff, neighbors, and outside peer review architects and to receive initial feedback from the Architectural Review Committee. As part of that pre-submital process, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting on May 4th, 2017. Thirteen members of the public were present at that meeting and there was a number of questions that were brought up, some of which were regarding the overall construction schedule, the anticipated rental rates. There's questions regarding parking for vehicles and bikes. And lastly, there was various questions regarding the architectural elements. Overall, the project was very well-received by the neighborhood. The project was reviewed at a check-in meeting of the Architectural Review Committee later that month in May of 2017. There was a number of recommendations. I'm not going to go through every single recommendation, but I want to highlight three of them. One recommendation was to widen the Sylvan Avenue and Green Avenue curb cuts to allow for adequate onsite circulation. There was another recommendation to incorporate a trellis above the garage entrance along the Sylvan Avenue frontage. There was also a recommendation to provide actual material samples for all proposed exterior finishes. The applicant implemented all the recommended changes and eventually submitted a formal application on February 23rd, 2018. The Architectural Review Committee then reviewed the project for a second time as part of the formal entitlement process and this meeting occurred on October 11th, 2018. At that meeting, the Architectural Review Committee forwarded this project onto the planning commission. It was very well-received and there was a few minor comments. In general, staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the design guidelines outlined within the transit corridors plan. I just want to highlight two in particular. TCP Design Guideline A1-14 states that buildings should be oriented so that primary facades face key pedestrian entrances and major streets. In this particular case, the main entrance, which includes the lobby, is located along the south side of the building, which fronts onto Sylvan Avenue. So, we do find that it's consistent with this specific design guideline. There's also a design guideline regarding the overall massing and scale of structures within the transit corridors plan. TCP Design Guideline A2-1 states that new development must respect the scale, form, and development pattern of the existing residential neighborhoods. Directly adjacent to the subject site are multifamily residential structures. There's an apartment unit located to the west and an apartment unit located to the north of the site. Additionally, across the street to the east, there's also a multifamily residential building there. We do find that the three-story apartment, as proposed, is respecting the overall design and scale of the surrounding neighborhood. As noted, a conditional use permit is required to establish a ground floor residential unit. Really, the purpose of the conditional use permit process is to evaluate the proposed project in relation to its surrounding environment and to ensure that it will be consistent and will complement existing uses and will not negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood. Typically, in a downtown environment, it's best to have active uses on the ground floor level. However, in this particular case, the subject property is located one block from San Mateo Avenue, where there are a variety of commercial-related uses. Staff finds that the proposed ground floor studio unit will help blend this proposed project in with the surrounding neighborhood, which consists of a variety of residential uses, including multifamily residential apartments. In regards to parking, the transit corridor plan provides a baseline parking standard and guidelines. Per the parking standards within the transit corridor plan, the project would require nine to 15 parking spaces. However, recently, the city council provided staff direction to alter the TCP parking requirements. Based on this direction, a total of 16 parking spaces would be provided or would be required onsite. If approved and constructed, this project would provide a total of 14 spaces, which is too shy of the recommended city council proposal. In this particular case, staff, or the project as currently presented to the commission contains a total of 13 parking spaces. However, staff has added a condition of approval requiring an additional parking space be incorporated along the Sylvan Avenue frontage. So, with that condition of approval, there'd be a total of 14 total parking spaces provided with this project. In regards to the overall neighborhood outreach, as previously noted, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting on May 4th, 2017. Staff did send a courtesy notice 10 days prior to the Architectural Review Committee. We did receive one email from a citizen who expressed concern regarding parking-related matters in the greater downtown area, but overall, they expressed support for the proposed project. Staff also sent out the required legal notice 10 days prior to this planning commission meeting. We have not received any additional comments from the public regarding the proposed project. Overall, staff is supportive of the project. We do find that it would greatly improve the appearance of the existing site and would provide much-needed housing in our community. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the two attached resolutions and forward the project onto the city council. This concludes my portion of the presentation. I will now hand it over to the project architect, Mr. Alan Kuhn, who will provide a little bit more detail regarding the architectural elements of the proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alan William Kuhn. I'm project architect on this latest project in San Bruno, 500 Sylvan Avenue. First, I'd like to publicly thank my client for selecting me to design this project and taking on the abandoned structure that's currently on that corner and enduring the lengthy process to get to where we are tonight. As Matt had said, there was a challenge and I believe that we presented a design here that maximizes the transit support development that's part of the design development guidelines. This design blends and enhances the residential mixed-use and commercial character that exists along Sylvan Avenue. And it does this using many design elements that are part of the design guidelines for that area. I'm not going to go over each and every one, but I'm going to highlight eight of the major or the most important design elements that are in your development guidelines. First among these is the visual anchors. It's a term that doesn't really, it's not fully understood by many people, but visual anchors mean the property itself should be connected in some physical way to its surroundings. It's easier on an interior lot, but on a corner lot, this is a little more difficult. So, in this case, the terminal masses, if I can relate to the rendering that you can see there, occur on the corner where we have an elevator tower. It occurs to the left of the structure on Sylvan Avenue, where we have a stairway and structure. And then on the Greens Avenue, we have another terminal mass at a single story near the entrance to the garage area at that point. The great architect Frank Lored Wright once said that if you can take care of those terminal masses, or in this case, in the development standards, the visual anchors, the rest will take care of itself. And I like to think that this particular design accomplishes that. Another element in the design guidelines is requesting the unique roof lines and having shallow and deep overhangs. And this structure does that also. It's got one-foot overhangs, it's got four-foot overhangs, it's got deep recessed six-foot overhangs, and this creates elements of shade and shadow as well as the balconies, which step back from the second story. The third floor steps back from the second and the balconies step back with the upper floors. These create shadow lines on each floor level and additionally add interest and depth to the facade. The other element that's important is that this project has access to sun and air and on all sides of the project. So, it's not just a front-to-rear project. The entire project has windows and glazing and on all sides. Again, the other important part of any design is what are commonly referred to as articulated forms. What does that mean? That means design elements that are visually interesting, unique, not so standard and so predictable that they're boring. But this building has several elements to it, including columns and highlighted windows, special effect windows in the elevator tower and a trellis that takes you to the garage entrance and other trim details that are part of what we refer to as articulated forms. We also have changes in building materials that are significant. On the ground level, we have some stone incorporated into the design that is set in a recess. So, it's not just a matter of putting stone on the facade, but the development design guidelines, which I will say, by the way, are very well-written and require that any change of material be in a recessed area. And that's what this design accomplishes on the ground level. The upper-floor balconies and private patios provide outdoor spaces for the residents. Now, these patios also are transparent with a semi-transparent glass enclosure that allows us, and walled off so that the wall is low enough to let the sunlight get into the apartment units, but high enough to block some of the items that the tenants might have out on the balcony. And so, it's a translucent glazing that accomplishes this. And this is something different that I think I've used it for the very first time on this project and I think it's going to be successful. We also have special effects downlighting at the balcony projections and stairwell so that the lighting on this structure is indirect. So, there's nothing glaring at you necessarily. However, we have some nice coach lamps right at the building entrance on the corner that announce, you know, the entry. So, the south-facing facade maximize heat gain and natural sunlight and we're using throughout drought-tolerant landscaping and providing also pervious synthetic turf and hardscape pavers to absorb the runoff from the site and all of the runoff from And all of the runoff from the roof is all connected to hard pipelines that's discharged out into the storm drains. I'd like to say that the tenants and guests access this structure through four entrances. The main entrance is an elevator lobby, and we have stairway entrances on the, I would say, the west side on Sylvan and also on the west, southwest side on the corner. In addition, this project incorporates some green building components, and among these are durable and low-maintenance exteriors. We have high-efficiency lighting and heating systems, Energy Star appliances, and we have a 40-year-rated Class A roof. And landscaping surrounds all sides of the project. So this project, as Matt has said, is, has been well-received by the community. It's taken a long time to, to work this all together with planning staff, and I commend the planning staff for working with myself and the developer, and they've done a terrific job. I'd like to say that Matt, especially Matt Neway Bommer, has been very helpful during the course of this process. So if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions at this time?
Through the chair? I don't have any questions, just a comment. I was on the Architectural Review. You've made all the changes and additions, and it really has-
Ma'am, with age comes loss of hearing, so you're going to have to speak up a little-
Sorry, let me, let me look at my, maybe my microphone was not on. I served on the planning, on the Architectural Review, and you've made all of the adjustments, and it just, it's really looking well. So you've done an excellent job on, on a good building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions before we open this up for public comment? Nope? Okay. Just a quick question. You, you used the word-
I'm sorry, ma'am. I really can't hear you at all.
Yeah. You, you used the, the word lengthy. I'm just curious, when did you actually, when did the application first get submitted? When was your application submitted? The initial application?
About two years ago.
Two years ago, okay.
Been in the process for two years. The other thing I'd like to add is this apartment building happens to be right across the street from my office, so I spent a lot of time studying what to do there, because I've got to look at it every day. So, you know, a lot of architects, you wish they could get to what they call their signature project, okay? And I, I would have to say that this is, this is one of mine, so.
Great.
And I, I, I think it'll be a good project for the community.
Okay. So we're going to go ahead and open the item up for public comment? So if you can just, I guess, well, let me see if, before I ask you to step aside, does anybody have any public comment on this item?
I do.
Go ahead. Okay. So I'll ask you to go ahead and step aside for, for a couple minutes, and then we can call you back up. Thank you.
Russell Steins Reed. A few things. One is, I'm wondering if this developer would exclude themselves from a, a parking permit program in the future because of the problems that we are experiencing, that we experience on the east side of town. I'm wondering if they'd be open to doing that. The second thing is, you know, City Council went and they changed the parking requirements. I'm hoping that this development can find the other two parking spaces somewhere. And lastly, I would, I, I'm wondering, because this happened on San Mateo Avenue, we were very pleased that the development stayed down to three stories. I don't know if these guys could go higher or not, but the development on San Mateo Avenue went three stories, but little facts to the, to the residents, did we know that they could add lofts later on and come back and, and actually put like a, a fourth floor on, on the, the building? So is that still open for these guys to come back later, go back into planning without having to come back through any approval or anything and, and add a loft on this building?
So-
Add, add lofts above this?
Hold that question, because we're not, um, public comment, we're not, we're not going to engage, but we, but we can ask the director as soon as public comment is closed.
Right. Thank you, that's it.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? No? So we're going to go ahead and close public comment? And I think that question is valid as far as adding a floor. Is that possible later? I'm not sure who I'm looking at, who might have the answer.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
Whether the applicant can, after building this, the three stories, can they later add one or two stories to be within the five?
Lofts.
Lofts, I'm sorry, lofts.
So i- if this project is approved, eventually, the applicant will be required to submit plans to the Building Division. At that point, we staff will review the plans that are submitted to the Building Division to ensure that they're consistent with the approved plans. If they're in general conformance with the approved plans, we will proceed with our building permit review. If they're not in general conformance, meaning they're going to add a fourth floor or a loft, chances are, it would come back to the commission for review.
Okay. Thank you. And since public comment is closed, do any commissioners have questions or suggestions?
Through the chair. Yeah, I have a question regarding the, the recent decision by the City Council to change the, the rules in the, in the Transit Corridor regarding the parking. I, I mean, I, I understand, you know, what happened here in terms of that, you know, this building was designed and got 95% of the way through the process to tonight against the, you know, working against the rules that were on the books at the time. The change that the City Council made was only made a few weeks ago. What I didn't see in the, in the, in the packet and the materials that were provided, and this might just be because I'm new and I missed it, is how, is, it mentions that the currently recently-approved rules require 16 spaces, and it also says that this one has 14 spaces. So I'm not understanding where in the packet it's saying that this is okay.
I can clarify that. So the City Council held a study session in January where they reviewed proposed parking standards. They did not vote and codify them at that point. Those will come back actually before you at a public hearing as there is zoning code amendment ultimately to the City Council to be codified. So there are no parking standards that apply to this project in, because it's a planned development project. So with a planned development project, the zoning is tailored to the specific site through the planned development zoning use. In the packet, there's an exhibit that provides those development standards, and the development standards explicitly state that 14 stalls are required for this. We do compare them to the, the current city standards and the current recommended parking stand, standards, which again, were reviewed by council, and council provided feedback that they were in support of those. We did meet with the applicant and communicate the council's direction, and we did identify where one stall could be added, but staff's thorough analysis led us to believe that there were no options to add any more additional parking, and that if we were to apply the recommended, but again, not codified, parking standards for projects in the Transit Corridor Plan, that it would result in the loss of a unit. And so in faced with sort of the history of this project, and that up until basically January 2019, we, we had been using the different parking standards which were recommended in draft format in the Transit Corridor Plan going as far back as 2013, that we felt on balance, we could support this project. I also want to emphasize that we did include conditions of approval that explicitly state that the parking cannot be unbundled, and that at least one parking stall will be provided for each unit. There are some larger bedroom units, so essentially, the one-bedroom units will all get one parking stall, and then some of the two-bedroom units will not have two stalls, which is the rec, new current recommendation is one stall for one-bedroom units and two stalls per two-bedroom units. But also, a unique characteristic of this site is that it is a corner, and so there is street parking. That was also taken into consideration, a lot of properties that aren't on a corner, for example, might only have one stall on their property frontage in this particular site, which is on a corner, has multiple stalls along the frontages.
Okay, thank you. It was the, it was the recommended and not codified portion that, that I missed, so that makes sense. And I, I, at this point in the, in the process, and, you know, the, the, the architect and the owner, you know, were conforming against the rules that were, that are in place, so that makes sense. And it would require a substantial redesign of the building at this point to find those two spaces, so that's understandable. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask regarding the parking, if we can get creative, because I drove by today, and I think I counted 14 spaces today, and it's not, it's not a resident, a residential space, you know, as we know it. So now we're going to have, you know, maybe potentially two or three cars per unit, we don't know yet. So the question that I had was, can the developer be required at this point to have bicycle stalls and extra two spaces for motorcycles? You know, something that is minimal, but that really encourages the Transit Corridor Plan and the purpose of it?
Yeah. And the, the applicant is actually proposing both long-term and short-term bike parking onsite. There's six, I believe, five or six long-term bike storage, or a long-term bike storage area located on the northern portion of the site that's enclosed by a six-foot wrought iron fence. There's also short-term bike parking that's provided along the Sylvan Avenue frontage. That would be eliminated with the addition of the 14th parking space, but we do have a condition of approval that the applicant must replace those bike parking areas, the short-term bike parking, and they have to be publicly accessible from the public right-of-way. So that has been included in the condition of approval.
Is, which page is that on? I'm sorry, we ju, because we just got, I just want to see where.
So you can see, it's on the very first sheet, sheet A1, the site plan. And you'll see currently proposed, there's two short-term bike racks that are located along the Sylvan Avenue frontage, and then there's additional long-term bike storage along the northern portion of the site.
Okay. So you're saying that the two short-term on Sylvan, they're only short-term because they will be at parking space at some point?
They're, they're considered short-term because they're not, they're not fully enclosed, and they're, they're accessible to, to members of the public, whereas the long-term bike parking would be fully enclosed with a wrought iron fence and would be available for the onsite residents.
So I, I'm going to kind of dig in a little bit deeper. The short, why not just call it long-term? If it's going to be long, if it's going to be there for the life of the property?
It's short-term in the sense that it's for guests and that it's not enclosed, it's accessible from the public sidewalk. So if you were going there to visit your friend on a short-term basis for a couple hours, you'd bike over and you'd lock your bike there. The long-term parking, which would be overnight, is secured to minimize theft.
Okay. So there's-
So it's the duration of usage, not life of the project. It's-
Okay. So under the, in the record, it's, there's no, I just want to make sure there's no confusion that after the construction is done, that these can then be removed?
Correct. Yeah. Short-term is just, it's accessible from the right-of-way, and it's meant for guests. We could call it guest bike parking and resident bike parking if that made more sense, but-
Yeah, that'd be great.
It, the codified language is short-term and long-term, just so you know.
Okay. Great. And then just some questions for staff, because I, we recently heard about the impact fees. So will this project get the impact fees?
So this project was being processed, also known as in the pipeline, and the City Council in adopting the ordinance for the development impact fees back in February did add a clause that allowed for projects that are deemed complete by a certain date, which would be this project, and approved by a certain date, which would be this project, to enter into contracts with the city relative to the development agreement fee applicability. And so we are having those conversations relative to that contract, and they're underway.
Okay.
But they are not subject to public approval as part of the development application.
Okay. So then, would this fall under any of the inclusionary housing or the affordable housing?
So this project will pay the fee for the affordable housing impact fee under the current affordable housing ordinance.
And I, and I believe based on the square footage, it would not fall into the park-and-leave fee that was at that time in place?
So the park-and-leave fee that wa, is still in effect and, but will be rescinded shortly with the implementation of the development impact fee, which goes into effect May 1st. It applies only to ownership or subdivision projects, and this is a rental or apartment project.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
The park fee does not apply and will, would not apply.
Okay. Thank you. So I, that's it for me. Any other questions from the commission? No? Okay. Does anybody want to motion?
Through the chair?
Yep.
It's a resolution, so it's going to be a, it's going to be a, roll call vote.
Okay.
So I move that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2019-01, recommending a zoning district amendment to establish a planned development district, and Resolution 2019-02 recommending approval of a planned development permit, Architectural Review permit, and Conditional Use permit. And it's based on the findings of 1 to 21 and subject to all conditions of approval listed in Exhibit A of Resolution 2019-2, and forward, and will be forwarded to the City Council.
Okay. Roll call vote. Chair Mason?
Aye.
Vice Chair Legasse?
Aye.
Commissioner Bisadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lethine?
Aye.
Thank you.
So the ayes carry the votes. Congratulations, you've moved on to the next, the next phase. The next and the last item tonight-
There's, there's two resolutions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So we need a second motion for the second resolution?
Yeah.
All second.
Or a motion for the second resolution? I'm sorry.
Oh, it wasn't included in what married. Oh. I'm not sure how to articulate that just yet.
Okay.
I'll let somebody else do that.
So we ju, we just voted on 2019-01, right?
Yes.
So we need somebody to propose Resolution 2019-02.
Correct.
Recommending approval of a planned development permit, Architectural Review permit, and Conditional Use permit based on finding 1 through 21, and subject to all conditions of approval listed in Exhibit A of Resolution 2019-02, and forward to City Council.
Chair Mace, Mason?
Aye.
Vice Chair Legasse?
Aye.
Commissioner Bisadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Lethine?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And then the last item, I'm going to actually ask staff to help me with this, because I don't believe this is going to require a vote.
Correct.
So if you can give us just some background on what we're, what we're looking at tonight so that the public and the commission are all aligned.
Do you want to handle it? Okay. We're going to hand out the PowerPoint. So the item tonight is a request before you to receive the report to take public testimony and provide feedback to staff on two different items. The first is the draft small wireless facility ordinance that will amend Title VIII. Title VIII of the municipal code is streets, sidewalks, and rights of way. It is, it is not a zoning code amendment, which is why you're not taking a vote. The commission does not have purview over amendments to Title VIII. The second part for you to review and provide feedback on is the resolution. That resolution has three main components. It's, has the design and siting guidelines, the engineering design standards, and the standard conditions of approval that would apply to small wireless facilities, which under the order and the regulations would, may only be located in the public right-of-way and within utility easements, which may be on public or private properties. So with that, we, we'll start the staff report.
Thank you.
Before we get started, I have a, an email here that I received today. I gave the commissioners a copy. It's a lengthy one, but I, but I sent it to you earlier. And just for the public, I'm, I have two additional copies. I will put them on the back table back there so that anyone who wants to peruse those Good evening, Chair Mason and members of the Planning Commission. Michael Smith, Senior Planner. I'm here to present to you- I'm here to present to you draft small wireless ordinance and, draft ordinance and accompanying draft design and siting guidelines, engineering design standards, and standard conditions of approval for your review and comment. So first thing I wanna do is go over the agenda for tonight's meeting, or this presentation, excuse me. First, I will start off with the objective for this presentation. Next, I will present the background related to the Federal Communications Commission, or FCC, and their recent order, which reduced barriers to small wireless facility deployment. I will provide information about the Planning Commission study sessions that were held up to date. Then I will summarize the feedback that staff received from the Community Engagement Section that was held in January, provide an overview of the ordinance and the design and siting standards, and, um, and just, I also wanted to say that this is, while I'm up here presenting today, this was very much a multi-department effort. It was prepared most basically with members of Public Works staff, Community Development staff, and, and the city attorney, who is here with us today to answer questions as well. We've been working on these reg, regulations for, and these guidelines for a few months now. As you know, we started somewhat back in October, and that was kind of a transition period, but we, but here we are today, and we hope to be taking this forward in the next month to the City Council. So, starting off with the objective. The objective of tonight's presentation is to, again, take public testimony and provide feedback to staff on these draft regulations that will then be presented to the City Council for consideration. Because the chapter of the San Bruno Municipal Code that is being amended here is not located within the land use chapter, it does not fall within the Planning Commission's purview. We are doing this because at the onset of this process back in October, we did not know where these regulations would land at that time. It was after only internal discussions, as I said, with the multiple, multiple departments, that it was determined that because Public Works regulates the pu, the right-of-way in the San Bruno, that that was the proper place for these regulations. So, starting off, small wireless facility has emerged as a result of growing capacity demands across the United States. Small wireless facility networks are comprised of a series of small, low-powered wireless antenna facilities that have much smaller coverage areas than typical wireless facilities, usually located on private property, and typically have a range of around, up to 500 feet. Small wireless facility networks provide increased capacity and data transfer rates to existing coverage areas, as well as improved service within areas with leak, weak or limited coverage. These are not 4, 5G. Generally, they are installed on poles within the right-of-way. Because they are in the right-of-way, they are regulated by the PUC Code, Section 7901, which treats them the same as telephone operators and telephone companies and their, uh, equipment. And they are subject to the same rights. Cities have the right to regulate time, place, and manner, but cannot prohibit or reasonably discriminate. But the FCC does not provide much further guidance, so there's a lot of gray area. In September of 2018, the FCC, at the urging of the cellular network industry, passed a declaratory ruling known as the Accelerating Wireless Broadband Deployment by Removing Barriers to Infrastructure Investment. The FCC order defines small wireless facilities as those facilities which are 50 feet in height or less. The antenna is no more than three cubic feet in volume, and the wireless equipment associated with that antenna is 28 cubic feet in volume. It provides for the expedited processing, which we call shot clocks, of small wireless facility applications. It limits the fees that can be assessed by municipalities on the review of these applications, and places limitations on discretionary aesthetic considerations. The new application review shot clock for small wireless facilities is 60 days for placement on an existing structure and 90 days for installation of a new structure. Fees are also limited, and if the city does not have proper regulations in place, carriers will be able to submit whatever design they want, and the city will be required to approve So, going a little bit into the different study sessions we had, so we, like I said, going back to October of 2018. The October 2018 study session was focused on examining our current regulations and recommended approaches to the new FCC order. Outside counsel was also present with staff at that time, and also gave a presentation summarizing the implications of the order, and was available to answer any questions. A second, uh, community, uh, study session was held in November of 2018, so a month later. Again, we provided background on the federal and state laws regarding wireless infrastructure, and also analyzed other communities' new ordinances, because there were a few communities at that time who had already kind of went ahead and started making their own. In response to those two study sessions, in December of 2018, staff created a dedicated webpage with FAQs, and all meeting material was posted on that website for consumption. And this was obviously in an effort to make this material more available, what we were reviewing, available to the public. And in January of 2019, which was the most recent study session, staff provided an update of the FCC order. We analyzed different types of small wireless facilities and, um, and potential design and siting criteria at that time. And then following that study session, we held a community engagement session, as you recall, here in the room, and I will go into that in a little bit more detail later as well. As in, right now. So, at that community engagement session, we had stations set up around the room. There were three to be exact. They were all manned by staff. Again, this followed the presentation, so what was on the boards was meant to kind of, um, help people visualize what these facilities would look like. The stations allowed the community to comment on things such as pole types, whether they be standal, um, different standalone pole design options, streetlight pole mounting options, and location options, accessory equipment options, and antenna mounting options for wooden utility poles. The feedback that we received indicated the community has a preference for small wireless facilities that are, that are streetlights, with all equipment enclosed within the pole. There was also a preference for all equipment mounted on wooden utility poles to be shrouded with the antennas located on the top, like bayonet style. And, uh, everything else shrouded within like a, a cylinder. The community did not express a preference for community, uh, for equipment cabinets that resemble faux benches or trash cans, so you won't see that as part of our regulations. Location preference was for mid-block siting and at shared property lines instead of, or in front of residences. Overall, the session was successful in getting the public to think beyond prohibition, to address health impacts, and that the city cannot regulate and focus on the facets of small wireless facilities. But in getting, excuse me, instead getting them to focus on the facets of regulation that we can focus on and where we do have control. So, a few key features of the draft ordinance that you have in front of you, based upon the study sessions that we had and the feed, feedback that we received. As I said before, this is gonna be in the streets and public right-of-way section of the municipal ordinance, so therefore the review for this is gonna be done by Public Works. Planning staff and the Planning Commission will no longer be involved because planning does not have jurisdiction over the right-of-way. RF review by an outside consultant will still be part of the process. We plan to use the same consultant. We're actually in the process of trying to have them do all the reviews instead of just the peer reviews. That would actually expedite things a bit. We've developed standard conditions of approval for all, for all the approvals. We've put a 300-foot notification, public notice, into the, into the ordinance. It's not to advertise a meeting. All of our meetings right now require a 300-foot notice. This is just simply to tell people that this is happening, that there's been an application Members of the public can request a written notice of the decision. It's issued by the Public Works Director. But it must be requested, it, it's not automatic. The Public Works Director has discretion to grant exceptions. And this allows the Public Works Director some flexibility to respond to different contexts as deemed appropriate. And then lastly, another key feature of that ordinance is that the, the appeals would be to the city manager. And the reason being is that, that most bodies meet once or twice a month at most. Sometimes agendas are filled, and with these new shot clocks, if someone's gonna appeal something, it has to, has to be done very expeditiously. And so we felt like the city manager was the appropriate place to do that and have So now I wanna talk a little bit about the design and siting guidelines. The FCC order provides guidance for municipalities in establishing design and siting guidelines and engineering and design standards. But the order states that requirements must be reasonable, no more burdensome than those applied to other types of infrastructure or deployments, and three, they, those, um, regulations must be objective and published in advance. In its order denying a motion for stay, the FCC provided the following additional guidance regarding small wireless facility design guidelines. And I quote, "The aesthetic requirements to be published in advance need not prescribe in detail every specification to be mandated for each type of structure in each individual neighborhood. Localities need only set forth the objective standards and criteria that will be applied in a principled manner at a sufficiently clear level of detail as to enable providers to design and propose their deployments in a matter, in a manner, excuse me, that complies with those standards." So the guidelines really take a look at three different types of facilities. Those are those that are attached to wooden utility poles and utility lines, those attached to streetlights and traffic control signals, and, and those are essentially existing infrastructure that's more or less owned by the city in most cases. And then lastly, new freestanding pole designs. The guidelines in general are designed to provide flexibility to respond to many different location contexts present in San Bruno, and streamline the appearance of the facilities as much as possible, but in an objective manner. Reasonable limitations on the overall size of the antenna and the pole-mounted accessory equipment are established to reduce obstructions and standardize the appearance of these, of Other key features of the draft design and siting guidelines that apply to all facilities: Installation shall be concealed to the maximum extent possible, with design elements and techniques that are mimicked to, or to blend with the underlying support structure, surrounding environment, or adjacent uses with regard to appearance, size, and location. There's only one facility allowed per structure. Ground-mounted equipment is permitted in locations that do not obstruct pedestrian or vehicular traffic. The approval authority may not permit, uh, ground-mounted equipment if the authority finds that the above-ground equipment would, um, unreasonably interfere with the public's ability to use the right-of-way. The approval authority may condition, um, any new approval on new or enhanced landscaping to conceal ground-mounted equipment, so there could be a condition added to, add additional landscaping to hide something. These cannot be located on decorative street poles or streetlights. Must comply with all noise regulations for the city. Pole heights must be minimized, and in no case more than 35 feet in height. New poles are required to replicate the materials, color, and finish of existing infrastructure nearby. All sma, on, all, a small wireless facility should be no closer than 300 feet away from another wireless facility, and that's kind of an important thing in there. That's one of the siting guidelines for separation. Other, other key features is that installations shall be concealed to the maximum extent feasible with design elements and techniques that mimic or blend with the underlying support Sorry about that. Onto the conditions of approval. So the, the proposed ordinance also allows for the adoption of standard conditions of approval that, that would apply to all facilities, whether approved by the approval authority or deemed approved or deemed granted by law, with automatically subject to all subject standard conditions of approval. The key standard conditions of approval here would, some of them would be like maintenance of the facility, compliance with the approved plans, availability of electrical service, inspection and access by city staff, insurance and indemnity provisions to protect the city, performance bonds when deemed necessary, provisions for removal of the facility if it is ever abandoned by a carrier. And then permit terms and timing of installation, maintenance obligations, compliance evaluations, insurance requirements, these are all, this is gonna be part of the standard conditions of approval on these projects. So in conclusion, the Planning Commission is not taking an action here tonight. I've just kind of touched some on some of the high-level aspects of these, some of the key features and how, kind of how we got here. But tonight, we're not taking an action. We're just trying to get feedback that we would then be forwarded on to the City Council for their consideration of the overall regulations. So this concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you have regarding the materials.
Start with, um, commission questions, and then we'll open this up for public comment, and then we'll go back to the commission again. Does the commission have any questions or comments at this time?
Through the chair? Go ahead.
Um, I do. I, I read almost every word of that very carefully-written document. So I'm gonna kind of go through, do, do you want comments right now, or questions? Maybe I should start with questions. The questions I have are, um, should the conclusion, I understand that San Bruno is part of a lawsuit filed by San Bruno and other municipalities against the FCC. Should, should that lawsuit be found in our favor? Can we amend this ordinance to be different? And what will the effect be on any applications that have been granted and installed? And can we demand that facilities be removed if installed under this ordinance, but we choose to change the ordinance?
So I'll, I'll answer that. Thank you, Commissioner-
Thank you, Commissioner. So the answer to your question is yes. If the courts ultimately rule in favor of the coalition of cities that San Bruno is a member of, then the city council is certainly free to amend the ordinance at any time. They don't have to wait for the city to win or lose. They can amend it shortly after they adopt it, depending on circumstances. So there's no bar to amending that ordinance. I think the one thing to keep in mind is that, and what the city staff and its outside council did keep in mind when drafting what you have in front of you, is that the city should not violate state or federal law as it exists now, while at the same time attempting to craft the most restrictive, stringent set of standards it could possibly muster, because the staff and the commission and the city council heard what the public had to say, and we tried to reflect as much of that as was legally and humanly possible in what we drafted. In terms of whether a new ordinance would retroactively apply to existing installations, generally, the answer is no to that unless the ordinance is specifically made retroactive. But then, you have issues that arise from the facilities, the carriers that already installed those facilities and relied on it. So normally, that would be, we'd have to look at each specific case individually, but generally, ordinances are not retroactive, I think, for obvious reasons.
Okay. Thank you. I have a little list, so I'll just keep going. Even though two facilities are not allowed on one structure, is it possible that multiple facilities could be on opposite sides of the same building? For example, like a larger commercial or public building?
Sure. Well, there is a requirement that the facilities do be placed 300 feet away from each other.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So I guess if the building was 300 feet in diameter or something like that, that it could be.
Okay.
But no, mostly, these are going to be in the right-of-way, and it's meant to regulate facilities within the right-of-way on smaller structures.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If I could just quickly follow up on that. I think it's important for everybody to understand that this ordinance does not apply to facilities on private property.
Yes.
It only applies to facilities in the public right-of-way.
Thank you. Regarding the distance of no less than 300-foot radius between facilities, could we realistically demand that the facilities be farther apart without encountering a lawsuit?
So, that's a great question. We asked our outside council for advice about that, because as you know, she's representing many of the other cities who were not only members of the coalition, but who are also fighting these regulations in court and have been sued, just like the city of San Bruno has been sued as a result of its denial on the 123 ALM application. So her recommendation and her firm's recommendation was 300 feet. The bottom line is that the farther distance you go, the more likely it is that the carriers will argue that what you're doing is creating what federal law says is an effective prohibition of service, and that's really the main thing. So the 300 feet was selected because it seems to be somewhat in the middle of the range that the small cell facilities operate at. It wasn't at the high end of the range, wasn't at the low end of the range, so that's why that was selected. The carriers will have an opportunity as well to weigh in on the provisions of the ordinance. They may have some comments, and we know we're going to have to be dealing with them who want more than what we've already provided in the ordinance. And so, the city will do whatever it can to resist those efforts and make sure that it has the most stringent regulations that we think are legally defensible.
Okay. Thank you. I think I know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway.
Well, I hope I do then.
Can we demand that facilities be placed at a minimum distance from homes or residences without encountering a lawsuit?
So I think the short answer to that question is no. And the reason for that is because there are no locations outside of the public right-of-way that are within those areas that facilities are allowed to be located. So the FCC order and state law says that they can locate these facilities in the public right-of-way, and to the extent that the right-of-way is directly adjacent to private property, there's really no alternative for the carriers to locate them in other places that we are required to make them do. So for example, we cannot require carriers to go onto public buildings. We cannot require them to go onto private property. We can't require them to go on other state and federal property, and we must allow them to go into the public right-of-way. Those are the constraints that the city unfortunately is operating under.
Okay. That's what I thought you were going to say. And this is just a curiosity more than anything, but why a 10-year permit term? Is there any benefit to the city for a permit term of 10 years?
Yes, that's a good question. That was at the suggestion of our outside council, who found a provision, I believe it's in the Public Utilities Code, that says that the city can limit these facilities to 10 years. And so, we took the most restrictive view and put that number in, because we can't say you can only have it for a year or two, but we can't say that you can't have it for more than 10 years.
Okay. And draft ordinance, the draft ordinance requires installation of facilities within one year of obtaining a permit. And it made me wonder, will that encourage an overbuilding of infrastructure as wireless carriers are scrambling to compete for poles and sites?
I'm sorry. I didn't understand the question. Say that again, please.
It makes me wonder.
Where are you looking in the ordinance?
I didn't write that down.
Okay.
And I couldn't find it for you if I tried. But as I recall, it said that there must be an installation of the facility one year after obtaining the permit. And it just made me wonder if the wireless carriers may scramble to compete for poles and sites and quickly put up a bunch of infrastructure that may ultimately not be needed.
Well, that's an interesting question. The general reason for that provision is to ensure that carriers don't collect approvals and then do nothing with them, even though that might be preferred by some, that they collect approvals and not do anything. The fact is that we also don't want to have a cache of approved applications that then don't go in and then all of a sudden all sprout up over a short period of time. That is also consistent, as I recall, with the code under our building permits to require that buildings start within a year. So that same rule is being applied uniformly throughout.
Okay. Thank you. Last one. Regarding facility abandonment, how would that be monitored, and how would the city know if a facility is not active for any period of time?
Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, I'll chime in. I mean, that was something that I flagged as well, to try to figure out, well, how are we going to know when it's abandoned? And I don't know that we have an obvious answer for you tonight about that. I thought about that and believe that we can also include something in there that requires the carriers to tell us when they're abandoning it, but then, of course, how are you going to monitor that, and how are you going to know that they're telling you that it's correct or not? But I think we just sort of have to apply a reasonable test to it, and it may be that we'll be able to figure out a way to do that, but right now, we are at least putting the burden on the carriers to tell us if the facility is abandoned, and then we can make them remove it.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all the questions I have for now.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Through the chair. So I'd like to start with, thank you, Michael. I know we talked about single providers on single locations. I'm glad to see that that made it to this level. I mean, as far as restricting things, I think that's probably the most effective thing we can do is by limiting them and keeping them apart. The notifications, we got it, you have it suggested at 300 feet from the site? I kind of had a thought that since these tend to overlap these sites, perhaps we should make that number just a little bit bigger. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so we did think about that, and I guess from the city's standpoint, it's very important both for legal defensibility and also for a public certainty in the process that we not apply an ad hoc number of different notification distances to different kinds of projects. And if you think about that from the city's standpoint and from the standpoint of members of the public, I think people are entitled to be certain about when they're going to get notice of certain things and when they're not. And if we say, well, in this case, we're going to notice 600 feet, or in that case, we're going to notice 1,000 feet, but in different cases, such as state law, which only requires 300-foot notice, then it becomes confusing. And then, the argument is to the city, well, you noticed for 500 feet in this one, why didn't you do it 500 feet for everybody? And so, it becomes very difficult for the city to make those determinations in a way that's fair to everybody, irrespective of the kind of application it is. So by selecting 300 feet, we selected a number that is consistent with state law, that's the same notice period that everybody else gets for development applications, and we're not treating the carriers any differently. That was the other thing we were concerned about.
Thank you. And then, the last question is, we speak about indemnification. What are we being indemnified from?
Right. So that's a standard provision of all of our conditions of approval. And what that means is that if the city is sued, not the other way around, but if the city is sued by a member of the public or somebody else claiming that the facilities have damaged or injured them, the carrier is required to hire an attorney and pay for the city's attorney's fees in defending that lawsuit. So in a situation in which the facility injures somebody or is alleged to have damaged property, and if the city becomes a defendant in that case, then in that situation, the carrier is required to defend and indemnify the city. That is, to cover all of the city's expenses in that litigation. And just for clarification, you may know that now, the lawsuit that the city is involved in is not one of those cases, because in that case, the city is being sued by the carrier itself and not by any member of the public.
So a member of the public could sue the city, and the cellphone or the service provider would have to cover the expenses of the attorney and also the liability?
That's correct. And it sounds like you might be surprised to hear that, but in fact, that's a standard provision of all of our conditions of approval for every single development project. So for example, on the project that you just heard tonight, on any of the projects you heard tonight, if some member of the public sues the city for having issued the permit or granted the approval, or there's some injury that occurs at the premises as a result of the city's approval, the developer is required to defend and indemnify the city.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Any other questions? Comments?
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
I have the same question as my colleague regarding the notice range. One thing that strikes me about the notice range is that, and I understand the preference and benefits of having a uniform notice range, you know, for different items that the city needs to deal with, but some of these facilities, according to the presentation, would have a range of up to 500 feet. And I would think that we would want to at least notice, you know, if a resident is going to be in the range of a new facility, they should probably be noticed about it. Would it be possible to put it in the ordinance that the notice range equals the range of the proposed facility?
Right. That's a good question. I actually think after hearing some of the--
Or with a minimum of 300 feet.
Right. I think after hearing some of the discussion, and perhaps at least some of the commissioners interested in exploring that further, we'd like to go back and look at that again. I think that rather than tying the notice range to the technology or how the facility operates, which the city may or may not have an independent way to verify, I think the important thing is to pick a number that we think is consistent and will pass muster. And so, we'll go back to our consultants and see if we can explore increasing that range in a way that's defensible, and we'll certainly take that into consideration.
So if you're going to, so just to follow up on that, if you were going to want to come up with a different number but have the number be the same, then I would suggest that it be the maximum range of these facilities.
Understood.
Great. All my other questions were already asked by my colleagues, so that's great. But I do want to just comment, after reading through all of this, it's quite a comprehensive and detailed plan, and I know that it was done on quite short notice due to all of the deadlines. So I just want to commend city staff and all the departments working as a team to bring this before us in such a short time. Thank you.
So I have a, oh, go ahead. Through the chair. I would like to endorse what Commissioner Hamilton has just suggested. I too would prefer to see a 500-feet notification radius. And I also endorse him in congratulating the staff and our council and everybody who was involved in this, the other departments, for a very good job with a lot of constraints.
So I too want to echo Commissioners Biassadi, Hamilton, and Legasse on the 500 feet. I just, I think in the past, we've had something similar where recommendations go to the city council, but I've never really asked how that happens. Is there a staff report that, there's bullet points that says the commission felt strongly on these items, and we have adopted them, and that's before you? We didn't adopt this one because, you know, ABC? What is the format that this is actually being conveyed to the public and the city council?
So I'd be happy to address that. We will incorporate the commission's comments into the public staff report that goes to the city council for consideration of the ordinance, and will indicate how the staff is responding to those comments and whether any proposed changes were made in the ordinance or in the guidelines. And I actually just want to say one more thing. This ordinance, you're correct that this took a tremendous amount of work, and I think that Darcy and Michael and other staff from the Community Development Department, as well as Haywan Ritchie, who's sitting in the audience here from our Public Works Department, spent a really unbelievable amount of time on it. Having said that, this is a document that has not yet been finalized, and we're still working on it with our outside council and with staff, and we're going to do everything we can to make it as absolutely defensible as possible and push the limits of what the city can legally do. We understand we're going to get pushback from the carriers on this, which we'll have to deal with, and we'll report all of that to the city council as well as all of your comments.
Thank you. So I do, I have a lot of questions, so I'm going to just start with the staff report, and then we can go into the policy after public comment. But I do want to just echo, I commend staff. I know how much work this takes, and I really appreciate that. It appears that most of this was actually done in-house, not contracted out, which is very much appreciated. I wanted to start with the staff report, the areas where it's in the response to the planning commissioner's requests. There's four items that we had requested for today's meeting. The first request was that staff follow up on the independent studies of actual small wireless facility options. And I want to address each one of these, because these have all come up a number of times. And so, the first item, I just want to state that the response is not actually to the request. The request was that we would have the independent study done before the policy was written, not contracted out moving forward. And so, the issue that arose was that at one of the ARC meetings, the consultant for one of the applicants was also the hired consultant that I had seen representing the city. And so, that is how this whole issue was raised. And we wanted to ensure that there was an independent study that was done and an independent party that was advising the city that was not associated, at least at this time, with one of the applicants. And so, I just, this is, the first part I just want to say is non-responsive, and I don't know if you want to respond to that, but that was the whole reason that this came up, that the request came up.
Could you clarify the consultant that you're referring to?
So the name, I believe, was not given, but I did bring it up at another meeting because it was in the staff report. So the night that I saw him, he did not present. I just recognized him with the applicant. And then, my understanding was that the city had spoken with the independent contractor and said that this is not okay, you need to be representing us or the applicant, you can't represent both. But I don't remember off the top of my head the name of the consultant. Does that sound familiar? CBR Group?
Yeah.
I don't. I know that it was at the, I know it was at the architectural-- I know that it was at the, I know it was at the Architectural Review Committee meeting. Through the chair. Maybe in September or October.
So, I mean, I administer the process, well, I help staff administer the process internally. And the only outside we can, consultant we use is the RF Peer Review Consultant in these processes. And to my knowledge, that individual has never been present at any of the meetings.
Okay. And at that time, I was still new, and I know I had spoken with Director Waltering about this, and he did agree, and he did state that that independent consultant should not have been present at the ARC meeting. So I just want to be clear for the record that that is what was being requested, not an independent consultant moving forward that, you know, would require the city to contract out work. It was an independent consultant prior to advise the city on what is required on the policy that we're seeing now. So.
I'll just explain, we really don't have any familiarity with the consultant you're referring to.
Okay.
And the city hired an outside counsel attorney--
Yes.
--who is not working for Verizon. She's representing us. So your comment about an outside consultant, we, we just can't respond to that because we don't have a name or can't follow up.
Okay.
The only, we will be hiring a consultant moving forward that will contract directly with the city.
Okay.
And that will be to review the RF reports, and that person would work for the city. And it is our policy that if we hire a consultant, that that consultant cannot work for an applicant who is also doing business with the city. So just in a general sense, that is our policy, that if we hire a consultant, have them under contract, they cannot then work for an applicant. And if we, if that became knowledge, and certainly, please inform us if you're aware of that, we will terminate our contract with that consultant or ask them to terminate the contract with the other party.
Okay, great.
But to our knowledge, the consultant that we're bringing under contract for the RF review will just work for the city, and we will make that clear to them moving forward.
Okay.
He hasn't been present in any of these discussions up until, he hasn't been present in any of these discussions, actually.
Okay, and I think that predates Director Smith, so.
Yeah, through the chair. I was there at that ARC review meeting as well, and I do recall, I do believe it was Director Waltering had commented that, and I do think it was the RF consultant, that he was there representing a carrier, if I'm not mistaken. And he was recognized because he was somebody who was doing RF reviews for the city of San Bruno. And that there was--
Okay. We'll definitely follow up.
My understanding was some sort of conflict.
And just to clarify a little bit, was that the October 2018 meeting, the very first one? Because that was the one where we had most of the people on the carrier side of the equation in participating in the discussion?
I do not recall the date, though, if we looked back at our attendance and the agenda, I think we could probably figure it out.
Okay. We'll definitely do some research, but--
Okay.
And Hammett and Edison? I think they perform the review, and they get on that behalf?
Yeah, we do contract with Hammett and Edison. But like, again, I work closely with Bill Hammett, and I haven't seen him at any of these meetings.
Okay.
So I don't know if he had another staff member down here, so I can ask him about that.
Okay.
But to my knowledge, he has not been here.
I know it was a familiar face to Director Waltering, but I couldn't, I couldn't say what the name of the consultant was.
I was present as well. I believe it was the October 16th, 2018 ARC meeting.
Okay. We'll definitely look into it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I, and I know it's on, when you do look at it, I just, I went on their website, and it clearly shows that they represent all the carriers. So that's, yeah. Just if you could, I wanted to clarify that this is not responsive, but also clarify what the request was.
Okay.
The other one, the other request we had was how the current small wireless facility litigation arose and the status of the pending litigation with Verizon related to the city council's denial of the use permit application for a small wireless facility near 123 Elm. And I think that this could be looked at in various ways. So the response, I see, I think, is a summary of what triggered the lawsuit, but, and maybe Mr. Zaffroni can answer this question, but I do want to clarify, because I don't think, I don't want it to appear that the public cannot appeal without fear of the city maybe being in a lawsuit. My understanding, when I read the summons and complaint, is that the issue originally was that the city, that Verizon is claiming that the city has an unlawful ordinance, and that it used that ordinance to then say no to the cellphone facility. And so then, that action by the city council then triggered the lawsuit, but the underlying issue is the city's ordinance, and that's how I read it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to comment on that. So I actually see that somewhat differently. If the, if the city had approved the facility, the carrier wouldn't be complaining that our ordinance was, was unlawful. So the reason why the city got sued is because the city council stood up to the carrier and said, "No, we're not going to approve this. You go ahead and sue us if you want to, and we'll use taxpayer dollars to defend that lawsuit." The, the fact that the carrier is saying that the ordinance is unlawful, they may or may not be right about that. In fact, that's one of the reasons why we're bringing this ordinance to you, is so that we don't have that exact same claim. And we certainly don't want to recommend that the city council adopt an unlawful ordinance or an ordinance that violates state or federal law so that we trigger yet another lawsuit by, by the carriers against the city. But the lawsuit was triggered by, by the city's denial of the application. And it did apply its ordinance, and the carrier is arguing that we shouldn't have applied that ordinance, we should have done something different. Most importantly, we should have approved the facility.
Okay. So, so I agree with the city council's vote, but I do just want to say that the unlawful denial of the Verizon application is a separate item in the lawsuit. The first item is the city's unlawful ordinance. And then the summons and complaint goes on to state that it took six months for the item, from the time it submitted it to the city, to actually come to planning. So then there was also an issue of how long it took, and then another six months from the time it came to planning to the appeal, then the upholding of the appeal, and then obviously the lawsuit.
Right. That's exactly the reason why we're proposing the ordinance in front of you today, which does comply with the very short shot clocks that are required by the new FCC order, which order was not in effect at the time that the 123 Elm application was, was denied.
Okay. The other question is in regards to three, the whether, whether the community can decide the design and placement of small wireless facilities. I see in the ordinance, the city essentially, let me see how I'm going to ask the question. So this is, I mean, under the new ordinance, the cities are incredibly restricted to what we can do. So that's, this is why this is going through the encroachment, it's going through a new department. So in your response, you say the cities cannot lawfully delegate their permit approval authority and responsibilities to the public. I think though, the, again, and I could be wrong, but if I remember that discussion, the issue was around whether the cellphone facilities were going to be optional for different neighborhoods. So, for example, one neighborhood may want a cellphone facility where they have art painted on it. One facility might decide that they wanted the streetlights. And so from what I'm hearing tonight and what I read, it sounds like the city has chosen the three designs that were the most popular from the public's feedback. And I just want to confirm that the public's feedback, from what I saw, were about 17, maybe, people that were present at those meetings? Because I believe I was at all of them, so is it fair to say that about 17 people were present at those meetings? Okay. So then, so based on the public's feedback, the decision, that's how this decision was made? And I'm not opposed to it, I just want to be clear on how that decision was made, that the streetlight is one of the best options as opposed to some of the other options that were provided?
It was based upon public feedback, but I really want to emphasize that the way the ordinance and the design guidelines are written is not restrictive. So they, the public feedback was one part of the component, but to a greater extent, we wanted to ensure that this is legally defensible.
Okay.
So there were some things that the public said that we, we can include in the ordinance or design guidelines because we think it puts us at grave risk of being out of compliance.
Okay.
Such as prohibiting them in all residential neighborhoods, for example.
And then the last one was providing an aerial schematic of all the city's school, federal, and state property in San Bruno. And to be quite honest, I thought this was a really simple ask. It's come up at, I believe, every single meeting that we have, and the city's response is that the map is not available. Could you comment on that, please?
So were you just, were you just simply looking for a map of the city that showed where public parks and whatnot are owned? And we have a zoning map that shows you where all those, oh, districts are, or, excuse me, open space districts are in the city. So, I mean, that's something we could give you. I just didn't know how much that was going to drive a decision to try to place them only in those areas?
Well, we, I mean, the, I think part of it is to make sure that we're also accountable to the public as a commission and as a city, you know, as this goes to the city council. So even though I understand that the policy is, and the ordinance isn't going to, we can't consider that, I think it's more that the public has requested it over and over. The commission has requested it over and over, and it just seems like something that would have been simple enough to provide.
Well, so we do have a map on our website that has, that's done by zoning district. It's called the zoning, zoning map, and it does have the location for all the open spaces. I don't know within there how many other city-owned facilities maybe don't pop up on a zoning map that, that I should be looking out for. So, yes, it will have all the parks, but is there some other structure that I'm, that I'm not aware of that is also owned by, owned by the city? And that, that's where we're, we're kind of limited in what information we can provide you.
Okay.
Through the chair. Does the city have its own GIS workshop?
Do we have our own?
GIS technician or--
We have to consult out.
Oh, I had expected that to be in-house. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Why don't I go ahead and, let me, oh, I know, it is, on page six of the staff report, this comes up over and over, actually, that, this is second bullet point, peer and independent consultant review of applications at applicant expense. So does that mean that the applicant will pay for everything from the time the application is submitted? That, is there a stat, like an in-house staff fee? So they're not just paying the independent contractor that this is being sent out to, but are they also paying for staff hours? Are they paying a fee for, is that all included in the fee, is my question?
Yes.
Okay. And is that a set rate, or that's going to? And I know this is in the ordinance too, so I'm going to actually ask about it again later, but how specific is it to the applicant that it's, you know, is it, if they submit three applications, are they being charged the same amount for each application?
We're, we are currently working on that fee structure, but we are allowed to capture full cost recovery.
Okay. Thank you. And then on page seven, at the very bottom, it says, it says, "The last bullet, pole heights shall be minimized, but in no case shall the maximum height of any facilities exceed 35 feet unless an exception is granted pursuant to the ordinance." But then on page 10 of the ordinance, it says here that on 3A, "The proposed temporary wireless facility will not exceed 50 feet in overall height above ground level." Is that?
That's a temporary permit, not, so that section of the orange you just read is a different, applies to a different facility, which is a temporary facility?
Why would, I guess why, then why is the temporary different than the permanent? Is that required?
So typically, they are just slightly different in the sense that a temporary one is a different type of construction than the permanent one? But if you would prefer them to match, we can take down that comment.
Yeah, I think they should both be 35 feet to be consistent.
Okay. It would help us if, if in your questioning, you made it clear what was an official sort of comment that you want us to note down versus just what was a comment, a question?
We'll do.
Because I thought we were in the question period of the evening.
Okay, we'll, we'll do.
That would be helpful.
So I would request, I don't know about my fellow commissioners, but that it be consistent, one, and that they both be 35 feet, two. Also, in the staff report on page eight, "Under standard conditions of approval," says "The key standard conditions of approval relate to practical matters of construction and operation and would include maintenance of the facility." The maintenance of the facility, would that be the responsibility of the carrier, of the owner of the utility pole, of this, or of the city?
The responsibility would be up to the carrier. In the instances where they're using a PG&E pole, that's kind of between the carrier and PG&E, but in the instance where they're using some other facility, it's going to be the carrier's responsibility solely.
Okay. And will that be clear in the standard conditions of approval? Where is that going to be written?
Yeah, it should, it would be in the standard conditions of approval for maintenance of the structure.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Just want to comment on that. Over the years, one of the questions that's come up on an ongoing basis is, is the maintenance of a pole? Because it was so new to us a number of years ago that we wanted to be sure that we weren't responsible from the city's end to maintain something that was not ours. So it was in the conditions of approval, and the question came up numerous, numerous amount of times. So just, so just so you have the information of that, that was important.
Okay. Good. And was, if I may ask, was it put in writing back then?
I can't remember specifically on, on that, but I, I believe that was part of the conditions. So I'd expect that it was.
Okay.
And--
Writing it down. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so that's it for me for now. Does anybody have questions before I open this up for public comment? No? Okay, so let's go ahead and open this item up for public comment. Does anybody have a public comment on the item? I do have three sheets here. Leslie, Emily?
My first comment would be on the community engagement feedback. 17 people were present at that meeting, but what was the percentage of the San Bruno residences, residents? How did they respond to the design option for the 5G small cell antennas in our neighborhoods? We've never heard about that. Do 17 people speak for the entire city? We have submitted to the commission 315 petition signatures opposing these 5G installations. Our petitions recorded names, home addresses of the citizens who participated. Where are the statistics from the study group poll? Our ordinances and guidelines, are they based on their poll of that one meeting with those 17 people? And I know you've discussed this, but I think the special language and action should, and actions should apply to permits, applications, and installations. And it would be our hope that when the FCC 5G guideline order is reversed, which we truly hope it will be, that all applications, all shot clocks, and all installations by those corporations and utilities involved must be rescinded and, and any existing facilities It should be clearly stated that, as you mentioned, Chair, Madam Chair, that there are independent consultants, experts, and engineers, and perhaps with what we've discussed tonight, there should be always two of everything, not one, so that we don't, we're not misguided, and it will eliminate any biased opinions in the future. And this was something that was requested in, on October, in October in 2018. All issues that affect the public's health, safety, and welfare should require multiple independent consultants. All ordinances should comply with the state of California's constitution protecting the rights of its citizens and the city. Health, safety, and welfare should never be compromised. You've all worked very hard, and I know that these private companies, and this is what these telecoms are, they are not utilities, have done a great disservice to our community. It's done a great disservice to the city of San Bruno. And I appreciate all the hard work you've done, but we just somehow have to stop this. And I appreciate all the hard work you've done, but we just somehow have to stop this. The citizens have to have rights, and unfortunately, the FCC has stripped us of those. Thank you.
Thank you. Simon Mizola?
I'm going to pass it to Allison Mizola.
Allison Mizola? Okay. Okay. So we'll have Allison Mizola go first.
Good evening, Commission. Today I emailed to you a 25-page document that includes many details that I recommend you include in your ordinance. It draws from ordinances from all over California, pulls out the best ideas out of all of them to make our regulations really strong. The first thing I want to mention is that I think we should include a clause that if the FCC regulations are found to be unconstitutional, that all permits that are in the pipeline are considered invalid, and that we're no longer can, continue to consider them in this manner. I want to highlight a few other things from this 25-page document that I think you should give some attention to. Secondly, the regulations that are included in the proposed ordinances use the FCC regulations for radio frequency emissions. I think this is really inadequate. We have, the United States has the highest emissions allowances of any country in the world. I think instead, we should use the BioInitiative 2012 recommendations for exposure. If we have to have these towers, let's at least bring down the RF emissions from them. Next, I don't see anything in the ordinance about schools. There's nothing at all that has any consideration about our smallest people who are developing and their cells are growing. I don't know why we don't have something that says these are not allowed near schools. We need to put them at least 3,000 feet away from schools. In addition, if we're going to put out notification 300 feet from a school, that means that if people send their children to the school, if they don't live within 300 feet of the school, they won't know that the tower is there. So I really recommend that you include in the ordinance that every single family that attends that school has to receive in the mail a notification that that tower is going right near their school. Next, you have heard from us time and time again that we're very concerned about the fire damage that could be caused by these cells, and we have seen over and over again in California, all the different fires that have come from the PG&E towers. I would like to recommend that we require every single tower have a sprinkler or other automatic system so that we don't have to worry about these fires catching and causing difficulty in our community. If they have a sprinkler on them, that will at least cut down some of the damage. Next, we already have a small wireless cell page. I think this is terrific. Every single application that comes in should be posted by the end of business that day so the community can be aware of where these towers are. We need to include ADA compliance. There are many people in our community who have EMF sensitivity. They need to be aware of where these towers are, and their consideration, their medical considerations need to be taken into account. We've had people testify about that they can't be near these towers at all, that, so they need to know if one of these is going to be near their workplace, if one of these is going to be near a place that they frequent. What if they're working at the school and the tower is there? They need to know. So that needs to be a piece of the consideration, and perhaps we need to be able to exempt some people from having this tower on their street if they, if it's going to make them very ill. Do we really want people to move out of our community because they can't live near this tower? Lastly, I think that we need to have a regulation in there that the tower, that the companies need to check the towers and their emissions four times every year. It should be the duty of the company to pay for it. It would be done by an independent contractor selected by the city, but the company needs to pay for it and prove to us four times every single year that the emissions coming from that tower are not exceeding the BioInitiative 2012 recommendations for exposure. Please do read that 25-page report. There's way too much for me to say to you here tonight, but those are some of the highlights, and I think there's a lot of good recommendations in there that we could put into what we already have and strengthen what is developing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Simon Mizola?
Good evening again, Planning Commission. I appreciate the efforts of staff, but I don't like the result, and I, I hope you don't mind the tough love, folks. But part of the recommendations are terrible, part of them are fine, maybe even good. The biggest concern, and it's a stunner, is that staff wants to remove this from the public eye. I just can't believe that. They want to take these ordinances, which are under your purview, and put it under a different agency that doesn't have public hearings. Who does that benefit? I'm sorry. I think that benefits staff. I think that comes at the price of public discourse. I think that that benefits the telecoms. That may not be staff's intent, but boy, it looks like it. I can't believe that our city staff would make that kind of recommendation. I think it's a little bit of a sleight of hand, and again, I apologize. I, I hope staff is working for our interests, but in that regard, I don't see it. I see the opposite. To take this and put it in a different section serves the only purpose of pulling it out of the public eye. That's all it does. Don't tell me that it makes more sense because it's public works baloney. It can stay in the same statute 12-220-010. You can just add to it. Keeps it under planning. Planning holds regular meetings. Planning has an appeal process. It's a real appeal process. That's another gigantic problem that I have with this draft proposal. It would remove the process from the public eye. It would remove all kinds of safeguards of notice, and it would turn this into what I think is a little bit of a backroom deal situation, where the city manager, an unelected official, is the appeal process. The city manager doesn't have any obligation to post these notices. I think you heard Mr. Smith that only people who ask for a decision will get one. Why is that? Who does that serve? That doesn't serve the constituents of this city. And then there's no requirement that the decisions are publicized. Why is that? What this would do is it would eliminate what happened here, which was people saw it, they didn't like it, they took action, they appealed, and they were victorious. So this entire, let's move it somewhere else, process is repugnant. The people, this is government code 54950, the people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created. So how would moving this from the Planning Commission to a department that doesn't hold hearings and that isn't accountable in this manner serve the public? It wouldn't. Just dead simple. It wouldn't. We've asked for a different kind of notice requirement. I understand that the staff has said that 300 feet is the state minimum. Well, I don't know about you, but minimums are minimums to me. They're not, it's not a limit. There's no limit of how far you can or should do it. So don't go with a minimum. If we need to change the rules so that all notices of everything is further than 300 feet, let's do it. If it's 600 or 1,000 feet, let's do it. If we can make a categorical application that a public utilities type permit is 1,000 feet, then let's do that. But 300 feet isn't sufficient for anything because a block is bigger than 300 feet. So people care about this, and they care about it when they know about it, and they don't know about it if they don't know about it. So really, I hope one of your strongest recommendations is that we overhaul this 300 feet. It's not hard to do. It's my understanding that we require the applicant to pay for the notice. So how does it harm the city to notify more people, to get more of our citizens involved in this process, which is important?
So your time is, it looks like I'm getting the hand sign that your time is up. Can you wrap it up, please?
Well, I have, I have a lot to say, and I think I'm last. Can I ask for more time?
Here, you have three more people behind you, unless someone wants to yield their time.
I know we, I'm sorry, we, we don't really allow that to, to occur.
Okay.
The reason for enforcing the same time limit for everybody is because if you don't enforce it on one occasion, it's impossible to enforce it on other occasions. And so we really do ask that members of the public limit their, their time to the allotted time. It's, it's fair for everybody, and we, we don't allow people to yield, yield their time.
Okay. So I'm just going to go ahead and ask you to wrap that up, please, then.
I will do my best.
Thank you.
If you need to cut me off, that's your prerogative, but I.
And by the way, the members of the public are also encouraged and can certainly submit all of their comments in writing, as, as one individual did, and we have it here. So if you have additional comments that you don't have time to make right now, please do submit those in writing. The staff will consider those, and will make sure that we, we look at those recommendations and, and comments.
Okay. Maybe Jerry, maybe 30 more seconds, and then if you could put that on the time. Thank you.
It'll be impossible for me to get a relatively good measure of the criticism of this report across you in 30 seconds. This requirement of moving things away from the planning into another division must be stopped. There must be notice requirements given. This must be a process that works for the citizens of San Bruno and not for staff and not for telecoms. This ordinance does not include nearly enough about the grounds you do have available to you to regulate, which are aesthetics. You need to require that. With regard to height, I'd like the further away, the better. If we have to have these, put them at 48 feet, not 35, because the radiation is the problem. The closer you are to the radiation, the worse it is.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to have to cut you off there. Thank you, Mr. Mizola. Okay, so we've got three more people. Russ Steins?
I'll, I'll make this real quick. Two things. One is, we're in the middle of a lawsuit, but it doesn't sound like we're really fighting that lawsuit. It sounds like we're caving to that lawsuit, and we're coming up with, we're changing an ordinance that we already have. So if I'm wrong, that's one, that's the way I feel about one thing there. And the other thing is, I was wondering if you guys, since you have these things where if the, if the pole falls, this, you know, the carrier is responsible for it, they have to hire our lawyer. Well, let's, let's, let's just say for the sake that the, you know, I, I listen to these things. Let's say the carrier is actually wrong, and these RF waves do cause cancer, and they do cause people in our community start getting cancer. Can we put that in our ordinance also that besides being responsible for the tree falling on, the, the pole falling on, also medically, they would be also responsible for other things if, if that's the case, and the study finds that? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Eleni Tripsy, Tripsa?
Here we are once again. Hopefully, we understand now that we're not discussing any gap in coverage. As I gave information last time, this is not about people, it's about things, and that's what they care about. I personally want to emphasize that Mayor Medina had personally said to me that we will do the 600 feet, and we will attempt to notify San Bruno in its entirety. I was one of the people that argued that we were not properly notifying, and I had, as I said, Mayor Medina's affirmation that the need is for greater than 300. So you need to go back to the notes and see, because the mayor did agree to greater than three, with 600 at the time in a discussion for further. I also agree that the higher it is, the lower the radiation emissions are for us, so we need to keep them away as, further away as possible. I also agree with the previous speaker. It is a big mistake to turn it into the city manager where we will have no notification, no recourse, and it is going to the back door. That is not acceptable. We want to have a voice. We want to be informed. We want to be part of the community, because we are the community. The House Committee is currently, or is looking in to investigate the FCC over the 5G infrastructure order, because they too have done that through the back door. So I would like for us not to be in such a big hurry to implement things that even our own Congress is looking to investigate. We want to do stronger, and I encourage you to look at the email that was received. I hope you get that information. Read it. Other cities are doing much stronger ordinances than we are. I am saddened to see the staff does not really understand what the needs are, and I do feel that it is catering to non-public utility companies, private companies for profit, and not really protecting us. That needs to also be changed. Seventeen people that came to that meeting without proper notification does not speak for San Bruno and the community. I personally went out and collected most of those signatures, and there were over 300 in opposition. You need to do your due diligence, as we have spoken over and over again. We need to do better. We need to be able to protect public. Health, safety is very important. We cannot dismiss that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Chuck and/or Suzanne Zelnick?
My name is Chuck Zelnick. I live on Merced Drive. Whether you're aware of it or not, I want to go back through something that happened this, earlier this month. On Wednesday, the 6th of March, Portola Elementary School was placed into a shelter-in-place situation due to the fact that a employee of the district in the kindergarten wing opened up an envelope with white powder in that envelope. The response of the school, I happened to be in the building the entire time, the response from the school, the staff was really well taken care of. The police department shut the campus down with officers at all gates, not allowing anybody in or out. I bring this up because of the importance. I realize most people here don't want this stuff, but I'm going to tell you something. There was a lot of parents standing at a fence, looking at their school where their kids were locked, not locked, but they were secured inside, safe from harm, and could not use their cell phones to contact the school inside. The school and the office manager, the principal, they decided to take as many calls as they could to reassure parents of what the situation was. They did not turn it over to an automatic answering system and just leave parents dangling. But the, you, you cannot understand what it, well, you all probably can understand. If your child's locked in a building and you can't reach him, and you're standing outside a gate, what the heck that feels like? Unfortunately, Portola has now become one of those schools in this country that has been threatened with physical harm to an individual as well as a white powder substance that came in. Now, I know from the last meeting I attended, there is a proposed small cell tower on Amador, just west of the back entrance of Portola Elementary School. From my understandings of talking to carrier, that area is designated as a dead zone for many carriers. And I know for ourselves, we have problems, and we live on the corner from diagonally from the school. If that tower would have been in place, hopefully, these parents wouldn't have the anguish that they had. I was able to hand over my granddaughter to a person on the outside of the fence, and I tried to assure as many parents as I could standing there that their kids were well taken care of and were in a safe, secured environment. So I realize there's a lot of opposition. So, I realize there's a lot of opposition sitting here that doesn't want this. But I think when your children's safety is involved, you want it. Now, I didn't see anything in the comments, or the proposed language, or anything, because I'm trying to figure out where my language would fit into yours, and I really can't do that, so I'm just laying it out there. But how do you address situations where a dead zone, where a proposed small cell tower could be near a school, to enhance the ability of parents getting to the school? Can I ask for my wife whatever number of minutes she might have in, in going forward? You know, how, how do you address that? And I don't see that addressed in the information. Now, maybe I just didn't comprehend it, but I think what you're looking at is, in a certain way. But this is a real-world issue, and these parents were very distraught about it. They tried to keep their cool. All they can imagine is all these other schools in the country that have been put under this kind of a pressure. So, I'm for one that says, have some ability within what you're trying to do, so that these dead zones can be addressed for public safety issues. And every campus in this district, whether it's Cappuccino, or, or, you know, Portola, Allen, Bel Air, any Church of the Highlands, all these schools in this area, if they are in some type of a dead zone, and there is a proposal to put a small cell tower in there that would give them the ability to be able to work with, in conjunction with that cellphone, so parents can find out what's happening to their children. Fortunately, the school was cleared about 1:30, 1:40. The major concern was, there was kids supposed to leave at 11:50. They didn't get off the campus.
Thank you, Mr. Zelnick. If you could wrap up, please. Thank you.
Okay. My point is, I didn't see anything in the ordinance, that's my wife's word, I didn't see anything in the ordinance that addresses issues relating to the schools, and what needs to be done to give public safety to our children, and, and confidence to our parents that they can contact the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, is there any other public comment on this item? Okay, so, close public comment, and go back to the commission.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I, I have some comments that I, I wrote down ahead of time, because I'm not usually well-spoken under pressure. I'll give a, kind of, kind of an overview of my, my, my overall feelings. Forgive me for reading it. My, my understanding, it's not hard to tell, from public feedback, is that our community is overwhelmingly preferring to have wireless facilities outside of residential areas for a variety of reasons. It's also clear that our community demands and benefits from the services that the wireless carriers are providing us. It appears that our community's demand for these services is increasing, particularly in our residential areas. I believe it's also essential for our own public safety, that we have adequate wireless connectivity in our residential areas and school areas, as well as a certain amount of backup for disasters or loss of electricity. Finding a balance between both our wish for service, and our wish not to have the facilities and the radio frequencies that accompany the service is very complex, to say the least. I'm a member of our community too, and I've been personally considering the nature of these facilities, and what I would feel comfortable with, my, my children, my neighbors, my family. But I also have to acknowledge that I too demand the wireless services that we're talking about. So, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I very much dislike that the FCC has really tied our city's hands, and I'm pleased that our city has joined the coalition of municipalities that's litigating to enforce the stay. I do like the idea of our residents having more control over the placement of these facilities. On the other hand, I don't feel that entangling our city in expensive lawsuits benefits our community. I'll really have to defer to city council's preference on those matters, but I do not feel I have the knowledge or authority to suggest we support more stringent limitations of small cell facilities that would, than more than federal law allows, until we know we could do so without incurring great financial loss to the city. So, given the restraints placed on us, I'm trying to take, in my mind, a balanced approach to the matter, while looking out for the well-being of the whole of San Bruno. And just a couple items of feedback. I do support noticing the radius, the, the, I support the noticing radius to match the facility function. I think that's a great idea. I'm glad that we're gonna be having independent consultant to confirm the necessity for closing gaps in coverage, and, who also has knowledge of alternate potential sites and concealment techniques, and I like that it's at the expense of the applicant. I'm glad for the no two facilities on one structure, avoiding visual clutter. One thing I thought may be worth revisiting is, if side-mounted from pole, there was a side-mounting description, that the arm may not be greater than 48 inches, and 48 inches seems really long. So, I don't know about the, the exact application of that, but I can't imagine a telephone pole with four-foot arm on it. Sounds kind of unsightly to me. Let's see. Oh, there was a section under the, the new facilities, the new, like, putting in a new pole, and I was curious what application would demand a new pole, the diameter of 20 inches. In a residential application, a 20-inch diameter pole seems really gigantic, and out of character for a residential neighborhood. Perhaps I'm mistaken, but I'd like that to be looked, be looked at, please, because 20, a 20-inch diameter pole sounds gigantic. And I'm torn on the 35-foot height restriction. As far as scale goes, 35 feet in a residential area feels comfortable to me. I know that city council, part of what was voiced, when they upheld the appeal for the 123 Elm, felt that the 50-foot height was not in keeping with the mass of the neighborhood. Whereas I do understand that members of the public are interested in having that higher to reduce the exposure to RF. So, I'm, I'm not certain what, what the difference would be, but I, I would encourage council to, to kind of consider both, and see which one would be more valuable, scale or RF exposure, or even if a higher pole would change the RF exposure that you receive on the ground. Oh, and I'm pleased by the section, I'm glad that you included that carriers are required to underground their equipment, except antennas, when undergrounding is happening in the area of their installation. I thought that was really sensible. Oh, and as far as the height restriction, the 35-foot height restriction, with the exception of the temporary facilities that the chair had mentioned, it was my understanding that temporary facilities are intended more for emergency use, in which case, a higher pole might make a lot more sense, because if everything is down, it might make sense if, if the greater height gets a broader coverage. That might be good for public safety. And I know that nobody's very excited about the boxes that, that are placed on sidewalks, that are usually backup generators, but I think for public safety, that might be really, really wise, and maybe to have those on, definitely, I'm, I'm assuming that they're on the macro towers, but for small cells, maybe ensuring that we have those every so often, maybe on larger arteries, having those backup boxes would be, I think, a sensible thing to consider. And that's all I've got.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Well, I support Commissioner Lethen's comments. I do have a comment on the radius. I think what's difficult is to have different, as, as our city attorney indicated, different, different requirements for different radiuses. I think that, to manage that, seems overwhelming, so from my perspective, is set up whatever the decision is for it, and be consistent, because I think that makes sense. It would, you know, the commission, as long as I have, when someone says, "We didn't receive a notice," or "We're on that borderline, and we're not getting it," it's almost better to, to be on the safer side, on the more cautious side. Mr. Mizola had some interesting points, and I just really want to encourage you to submit your information, so that we actually can read your comments. And Mr. Zelnick, I also live at Portola Highlands, and it, I have to walk around the whole house regularly to use my cellphone, and, and, you know, as much as we don't like some of the things that are taking place, the reality is, none of us are gonna, are willing to give up our cellphones. I mean, maybe some people, right? But the reality is, the majority of people are not gonna give up their cellphones, and, and emergencies do happen, and it's critical that we have, in that, in that moment of horrific fear, that we have as much opportunity to reach who we need to reach, and cellphones is what we use. What's the outcome to this? I think that Commissioner Lethen outlined some really good discussion points. I don't wanna be redundant in some of those. I would recommend that as commissioners, that we have these points, and they were really well-written, really well-discussed, Commissioner Lethen, that they get submitted to staff, so that way they have clarity, and not furiously taking all these notes, that are sometimes difficult to, or having to listen to the tape for long periods of time. So, I, I would like to support staff, to provide them as much as possible. You know, this is not an easy situation, and I think that we, we have a responsibility to our community, to do what's best for the community, and yet, to be able to be in the world of technology, because of many of the calls that cable receives, is I'm not receiving service, what's the situation here, what's taking place, and, and other services, and contacting different carriers, you know, we need better services. Then there's also, I have seen over my years on the commission, that there are private companies in private, including public schools, having cellphone sites on the premise. So, when someone mentioned that every single parent needs to be notified, the school district is responsible, from my perspective, to, if it's their, if they're doing that, I mean, they, someone has to take responsibility, and if that's what they're opting to do, that there's a plan in place to notify the families. I don't believe that the city can take on that responsibility, and all those components, certainly the carrier, but, you know, how, the reality is, who has those numbers, right? And it's really the city, and when they're in our backyard, there's some homes in some areas that there's cellphone sites that privately been contracted with the carriers. How do the, how do the people get notified? 300 feet, 600 feet, 1,000 feet? How do they get notified when it's a private situation? I think there's a lot to work out. I think this is, this is the beginning of really good bones to figure out, and I think that, even though, you know, Mr. Mizola made some comments that to be taken away from us, those are, there are some recommendations there, but we know we're a body of seven, and we will do our very best on our end to, to look at all the, all the components. And I think this is a beginning. I don't think that this is a, an ending. It's a beginning process, and, and we do need our public hearings to get input, and also for us to do our homework. So, thank you for the comments, for allowing me to have these comments.
Through the chair. I have a few questions for, for staff to clarify what is current process, so that I can understand what, whether we should be recommending anything different to the, the current draft. One, to follow suit with what Chair Mason was saying earlier, was asking earlier, about the maintenance obligation. I found the condition, the proposed condition of approval on page 11 of the public draft of the design and siting guidelines and so forth. And it is item five, maintenance obligation vandalism, and its text says what it requires the permit, so that clarifies who has the responsibility. But, we also noticed that it is, it is different from what we say in our three ABC license conditions of approval, where in addition to requiring the, the applicant or property owner, in those cases, to remove the graffiti within 24 hours, where there's no time requirement for the proposed small cell version. And we also, again, for the liquor licenses, we, we have the city, graffiti removal vendor will be instructed to remove the graffiti if it's not remedied within those 24 hours, and that will in turn be charged by the city to the permit. Is, is there a reason that we don't have the same format and the same obligations? Did that make sense?
Yes. Yes, perfectly clear. That's something we can work on. We can definitely make sure that those two are consistent. If you like the way the one is, and the ABC license, we can definitely transfer that over.
Yeah, if we already have a process and a, and a certain way of doing things, and in that case, it's a little better for, for us, I would, I would be inclined to add it to the, the draft here. Second, I have a lot of questions about how notification is made, because I had some, what turns out to be foolish assumptions. I thought, because I thought we had a GIS shop at the city, I thought that when you had a, a property, a project proposed, you would just get the GIS technician to give you everybody who's within the, the radius limit. It sounds like it's a little more complicated than that, but I'm very sensitive to what several members of the public have pointed out about the reduced transparency and opportunities for, for public information and, and, and public comments. I understand entirely that it is forced by the shot clock, and that we have to shorten the process to remain within compliance. So, I'm, this is not a criticism, but I'm just trying to think whether there are other ways we could improve the notification process. For example, and, and this is just brainstorming, forgive me if there, these are things you already do, but we could have a, on the website, we could offer an opt-in mailing list, where if you want to receive notifications of future small cell projects, you, you click, you send your request, and you're just added to the mailing list. You don't get a paper notice in your, in the mail, unless you're within the radius, but you are kept informed. We could have a status page on the website that just gives, here are the licensed applications, and here's their status, approved or rejected, or pending, and people could just go verify Same for notification for a notice of decision. If people are going to have to request those, then we should make it really easy for them to, to sign in for that, and we should also make it really easy for staff to, to deliver I, I saw in this particular report that, that had been notices on next door. Is it standard practice, or is it something we could add to, to standard practice, to always post on next door when we have a notification? It's, it's already set up by neighborhoods, so not to the same level, and it's not the same granularity, but whatever the project is in, I'm in Rollingwood, I'm interested in knowing what's going up in, in, in Rollingwood, I'm sure. If it's not a burden sum, adding this to the notification would be, it would be helpful. And then, oh, I'm sorry.
At this point, we'll take all your comments and forward them to the city council, but we don't have a direct response as to whether that, on those items.
And the last question is to echo the, the request for institute verification of RF emissions. I, I don't have any opinion or recommendation regarding frequency, but I would like to know, what is the what is the, the current practice? Is there any institute testing to verify what the, an applicant has said their, their installation produces? And if so, is it a one-time, or is it repeated occasionally?
Yeah, so we use an outside consultant right now. We use them for a peer review process for all RF review. And that outside consultant, based upon the type of antennas and the power being supplied to those antennas, is able to calculate what the maximum RF frequency would be from, from those antennas. And they're also able to do that cumulatively. So, so they are calculating what, what the max would be, and they're, they're basing everything off of, off of that. And so, we don't really have those capabilities, obviously, in-house, so we don't even have GIS. So, so that's why we use them to do that. And then, I did want to answer, or respond to, maybe one of the comments you made earlier. So there was some sentiment here that we're moving this to Public Works to somehow speed up the process. That, that is definitely not the case. It's simply that Public Works regulates the right-of-way. Planning does not regulate the right-of-way. And we are tasked with making these kind of decisions like all the time. Someone comes to Community Development First, and they say, "I want to do this," and then we start asking them questions, like, "Oh, you want to do that in the right-of-way? Well, that, that's going to require you to talk to Public Works across the, across the hall." So there's, it happens often, but I just, my point is that the, the purpose of it going to Public Works is not to reduce the process behind it. I mean, there are cities all over the place that are doing this through their Public Works divisions, and some of those cities actually have Public Works commissions, just a very similar body to this. So it just happens to be that we're small, that we don't have one of those. But it's, it's not meant to pull anything over on the community.
I, I understand, and I'm sorry if I gave the impression that, that I agreed with that, that particular view. I was referring to the fact that one of the commenters mentioned having the, the appeals go directly to the city manager as the appropriate place rather than city council. And while it's logical, it does take away an opportunity for the public to hear about what is going on, which is why I, I was looking for other ways to, to have more facility for notification. Regarding the verification of the RF emissions, what I was asking about is whether there's any ground truthing at any point. Is that, is that a practice currently?
No, they don't need to actually go out and do testing at the site, because they find that their testing internally, using the highest levels, is the best testing. It's, it's better than the actual conditions. So the conditions that they're testing by, by computer are exceeding anything that you would probably, that you would find at the site.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, through the chair. I only have one. And this is on, on the, the subject of, of public noticing again. And thank you for that explanation of the motivation behind moving it to Public Works. I, I do share the concern that, you know, these, these applications and the, going forward, would not be in a body that has public meetings. And I'm curious as to just what, so what is it actually going to look like? I'm looking at the public noticing condition of approval, and it says, "All residents and/or businesses impacted by project construction are to be notified in writing at least 48 hours in advance, describing work schedule, including dates, timeframes, onsite project manager name, cellphone number, prior to commencing work." I'm reading that as being, it's all done. The design's been approved, everything's been done at Public Works. Nobody's been, been apprised of anything in the public. And 48 hours before they come out to start digging, or nailing, or putting up the poll, is the first time the public is notified of it. And I'm afraid that I, I'm hoping that I missed something. I'm on the item, condition of approval number 23, public noticing. It's page, where are the page numbers? 18 of 21, public review draft.
Yeah, so, so that public noticing requirement for condition of approval number 23 is just related to the construction of the site.
Okay.
So if, if something was going to be installed, well, obviously in the right-of-way, and it's going to be incomode for a certain amount of time, that people would, would be notified before that actually happened.
So is it, there's another provision somewhere else in here for public noticing?
Yes, in the, in the actual ordinance. So, so by the time you got the conditions of approval, you would have actually already done your notice to the neighborhood.
But then what would be, but then...
But it is, it's on page 7 of 12. This was going to be one of my questions, too. So it's 8.36.070. And it says, "Once an application for a wireless facility permit is submitted, a public notice shall be mailed by the approval authority to all owners of real property on the site address, if any part of which is located less than 300 feet of the proposed wireless facility location." So once an application for the wireless facility permit is submitted. So that's at the onset, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So then my question would be, thank you for that, because I knew I was, I felt I was missing something. So that would, is because Public Works doesn't, we don't have a Public Works Commission, and they don't hold public meetings, is the only mechanism for the public to give feedback on the proposed design, placement, any of that kind of stuff? To go down to City Hall and stand at the counter, or send an email, and hope for the best? I mean, what, it's, it seems not good.
So I'll, I'll chime in just for a moment. This is a really challenging part of the ordinance. And I think as you've heard from some of the speakers and the comments that, that we've heard from, you know, some of you, it's very difficult to balance the mandated FCC shot clocks, which require approval of facilities that are in compliance with an ordinance within 60 or 90 days, with all of the interest that the public has in receiving notice, in asking questions, in appealing, and in having a decision made on the appeal. And unfortunately, the, the reason why the ordinance is recommended as it is, is because it, it was really, the city couldn't determine how there could be the, the sort of public notice that, and process that exists right now for planning commission use permits and appeals to the city council, and still meet the mandated shot clock requirement. And you can imagine, unfortunately, with, with one, or two, or eight, or 10, or more applications, that if all of those applications were appealed through the planning commission process to the city council, it would be years before, before those appeals could be heard. And so, planning commission and city council agendas, as I think we all know, are, are full to begin with, and certainly could be fuller. But the only way to ensure that those appeals are heard and decided within the shot clock amount of time, is to have those appeal, is to have the appeals determined by the city manager, who can act quickly and meet at the convenience of the applicants, and not on a regular meeting schedule that's, that's set by ordinance. So that was the challenge that, that the city had. Other cities have the same challenge. It'll be interesting to see, over time, how that, that all shakes out. But we, we would anticipate that a process that allowed for more than 60 days from beginning to end would be subject to, to successful challenge by the, by the carriers.
Through the chair.
Thank you.
Yes. Just want to comment on that. Already applicants feel that they're delayed in being able to be heard, and to be presented, and to be processed. Already, they're indicating it's taking too long, and if we implement anything, that's going to delay that. Other applicants, you know, residents and applicants, those types, I mean, there's a huge impact to that. And I think it's important that we look at the big picture. I know there was some discussions, some brainstorming around how you could notify people. Over the years, you know, and certainly, over the years, I've watched the layers and layers and layers of bundles of work that end up on staff. And I think that it's, if there was a way that, there could be some brainstorming, how that people could be notified. However, it is my responsibility, if I want to know something about my community, that there is a website for that particular business, and that if we have interest, that it's, that's kept up, and that's being notified. I think we can start somewhere. But the thought that the posting on a couple of different websites, and, you know, if you're doing next door, and then you're not doing this one, I think that just ties the staff way, way too much. I don't think it's a reasonable, at this particular time, a reasonable direction or suggestion. But I do believe is that, within our own system, to have notifications that we can go to, and it's our job to, to do that. And not everyone has access to, to all the technology, but someone knows somebody who does. And, and there's always that opportunity, good old-fashioned ways, good old-school ways of walking in and asking some of the questions. So trying to find that balance in there. A lot was discussed this evening, and I really have to indicate that putting more responsibility on staff to do other work, rather than keep them focused on things such as ordinances, and things that they have to meet with other, with, with vendors and suppliers. And to me, that is where I'd like, like this time to be focused on that. Give us as much information as possible.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so I'm gonna, I know it's getting late, but this, you know, we're gonna have this ordinance for years to come. So I do want to just dive into the document for a minute for my questions. So just starting on chapter 8.36, attachment two, I'm just gonna go directly through with my questions and comments. So on section A, second paragraph, there is a sentence that says, "This chapter is also intended to reflect and promote the community interest by, one, ensuring that the balance between public and private interest is maintained on a case-by-case basis." I, I would recommend that either that language be stricken, or that something, you guys explore that language, because I think the issue is really the public versus public interest. And the carriers have specifically argued that this is about a health and safety issue, whether the public has access to, you know, a carrier at the time that they need it. And the public comment has largely, largely been over the public safety in regards to whether the feasibility of potential cancer. And so I, I don't know that, that we're really looking at a public versus private interest. And I would hate to think that the only reason we are creating this is to, is because we're afraid of being sued. I mean, as opposed to, I think the, the truth is that we want to comply with the law. Not, we're not, we don't want to just make decisions because we're afraid of being sued. We want to make decisions because we're in compliance with the law. And so when I'm looking at this, I really think this is about the public's interest, and is that, you know, does the interest of a need for, you know, your cellphone in an emergency override the need for, or the statistics regarding health and safety with cell towers? Something more along the lines of that, or potentially that it be stricken. And these are, again, just my, my recommendations. Section B, this chapter is not intended to, and I would recommend that number four be stricken. I actually think number four comes off as a little tone-deaf to what's been regularly commented on. Deny any requests for authorization to place, construct, or modify personal wireless service facilities on the basis of environmental facts of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that such wireless facilities comply with existing or future FCC regulations concerning such emissions. So that's already the law. That's already required. And normally, you know, policy, you can reiterate the law, but my understanding is that you're also creating sometimes more restrictive language in the law, or your own language when you're creating policy. So it's already the law, and I just feel like, I mean, it's already known. I don't know that it needs to be included in here, but just my suggestion. Regarding the definitions, the definition, there is no definition of an independent consultant. And I think that it should recommend that an independent consultant be defined. What does that mean? Temporary is also in and out of the entire document. It's not, temporary is also not defined. What is a temporary facility? Is it there for six months? Is it there for 30 days? So if that could be defined, that would be great. Under 8.36.030, kind of minor, but it says director of public works, the director or his designee, maybe we can say their designee, it's assumed that it's a male. The next page, number three, on page, tell me if I'm going too fast, page four of 12, "Develop and implement standards governing the placement and modification of wireless facilities." I think that it would behoove the city to create procedures and standards governing the placement and modification of wireless facilities. The ordinance is being created, but what is the procedure to implement that ordinance? How, how will it be decided where the towers are going to go? And that can be an internal document. I don't believe that that needs to go to commission, but how is staff actually going to process these complaints, or these applications, either or? Number five, "Determine the amount of and collect as a condition of the completeness of any application, any fee established by this chapter." I think there should be a timeframe, so to ensure that the city gets paid in a timely manner. "Determine the amount of and collect however much money within a certain period of time." And then, if there, if it's not collected, is there a late fee? Number nine, it starts with "Subject to appeal as provided herein." I would recommend taking out "Subject to appeal as provided herein." And that would just say, "Determine whether to approve, approve subject to conditions, or deny an application." And, and then at the end, "Establish when an appeal may be requested." The next section is 8.36.04 or applicability, "Exempt wireless facilities." I just, I guess I just have a question here. "The provisions in this chapter will not be applicable to, one, wireless facilities not proposed or currently located in the public right-of-way." That one I understand. "Two, wireless facilities owned and operated by the city for public purposes, or amateur radio facilities." Two, and, three, and four, I don't understand. Why don't they fall under the same requirements as the others? So does that mean that if the city owns and operates a wireless facility, it does not have to notify the public?
So let me, let me address that. First of all, the city is not in the business of owning and operating wireless facilities. The city does have a, a business of leasing a portion of some of its facilities to wireless carriers for a large cell, not a small cell facilities currently, I think, as you, as you probably know. And so this ordinance doesn't apply to that, because they're not in the public right-of-way. And the city has what's called proprietary control over the location and all aspects of those installations. So the city doesn't have to allow any of them. The city can allow some of them. And the city can determine what they look like, where they're, where they're located, and what all the design features are. So there's no reason to hamstring the city in its approval of wireless facilities on its own property with regulations that are applicable to private wireless carriers in the public right-of-way. That's the reason.
So then, so the answer is no, the city would not then have to notify the public if there was a cellphone facility being put up?
That's correct.
Okay, so I would recommend changing that, because I think the public's interest outweighs the city being hamstrung, in my opinion. But that is just my recommendation. 8.36.050, and this is page...
Actually, I'm sorry, could I, could I back up? I think I may have misspoken.
Okay.
So unfortunately, I, well, or fortunately, as the case may be, I wasn't actually here at the city when all of the city's wireless leases were implemented back, as far back as the 1990s. And I'm sorry, I don't remember offhand and in detail, but I actually do believe that those facilities did go through a planning commission review, and were subject to the standards in the zoning code. So I apologize for, for that.
But then...
They would be subject to, not to this ordinance, but to the ordinance that's in your zoning code right now, which will likely need to be further amended in the future, but we haven't gotten to that yet.
Okay, so then, but under this ordinance that we're looking at now, you know, we're having this whole discussion about notification, and it's... having this whole discussion about notification, and it's, you know, clearly important to everybody. I just want to make sure that the city would be, would have to adhere to it as well. Okay.
Right. And, and keep in mind that because the carriers are authorized by law to install facilities in the public right-of-way, it's extremely unlikely that they would choose to approach the city and say, "We'd like to pay the city money to locate our small cell facilities on your building where we could go in the public right-of-way essentially for free."
Okay. Okay, here. So 8.36.050, required approvals. So this is where I was referring to with the, why it's important to have the temporary wireless, the temporary definition. This is on page five, because it says, "A temporary wireless facility permit subject to director's prior review and approval in accordance with the procedures and standards is required for any temporary wireless facility." So I just think it should be established, what is a temporary wireless facility? What is the actual timeframe? So if it's over six, if it's there over six months, then it becomes permanent, et cetera. The next page, six of 12, under number one, C1, under voluntary pre-submital conference. So the voluntary pre-submital conference starts by saying that before application submittal, the applicant is strongly encouraged to schedule and attend a pre-submital conference with the director. But then number two, then says, "The director shall provide the applicant with an appointment within a reasonable time after the director receives a written request, and if applicable, confirms that the applicant complied with the pre-submital conference requirement." So it seems like they contradict each other. And one, it's required, and on the other, they're strongly encouraged. So just if we can be consistent there. And then under number one, also, it's the very last sentence, "The department shall use reasonable efforts to provide the applicant with an appointment within five working days." And I just am thinking of staff, being a staff member myself, is that realistic? Should it be two weeks? I mean, are we setting the city up to respond timely? And if not, I think two weeks is reasonable, or even three weeks, maybe. And then the next page, page seven, under scope. Okay. The, under scope, it says, "The director may request an independent consultant review on any issue that involves specialized or expert knowledge." I just want to jump to A, permit, application, completeness, and/or accuracy. Do we, I don't know, I'm not the one reviewing this, but I'm just thinking of the cost and that the city's in a deficit. Do we really need some, an independent consultant to check the application for completeness? Or is this just here because you want to allow the independent consultant to have that option? I don't know. I mean-
I don't, I don't have a, I don't have an answer. We'll have to look into it.
Okay.
And forward your comment. With any response, we can prepare in the next week to the council.
Okay, so yeah, 2A, I think if it's possible to do that in-house, that would be ideal. But if you just want to leave that option open, I understand.
Yeah, the idea was that there are simply different things that arise in your review of something, and you may want to ask the applicant to verify something. And instead of simply relying upon them, you would then take out an outside consultant to have you verify on behalf of the city and the applicant. We would try to pass those costs on to the applicant.
Okay.
So our, our RF consultant that we use, they do other services related to this. And so they made it clear that they can help us out in other areas.
Okay, understood. Under 8.36.070, it's continued onto page eight. And I would recommend either adding number five or adding to number one, that either/or, but that the actual location of the cell facility be included in the notice. Right now, all it says is a general description of the proposed project plans, photo simulations, or rendering. But what's the exact address of the cell facility? And I think it should be clear. Like, it should, I think it's assumed, if you read it, but it should be in writing that the address needs to be in the notice. For 8.36.080, decisions exceptions, under section C, I was just wondering if, I know, again, it's late, but if there's an example of this. So it says, "Under exceptions, decisions on applications for placement of wireless facilities in the public right-of-way shall at a minimum ensure that the requirements are satisfied unless it is determined that applicant has established the denial of an application would, within the meaning of the federal law prohibit or effectively prohibit the provision of personal wireless services or otherwise violate applicable laws or regulations." And then it goes on, but I'm just trying to think, when that would actually, would that actually happen?
Yeah, that's a good question. The, we can report back on that as to what situations that might be. I think the general answer is that we always like to recommend that ordinances include an exception procedure to address situations that nobody has thought of, that, that come up afterward, that then you wished you had a way to either approve or deny something based on that. But we'll, we'll follow up on that.
Okay, thank you. And that's good. I agree, to have a catch-all. Okay. 8.36.100, page nine of 12. I do agree with some of my fellow commissioners and public comment. I have concern over the fact that the appeal goes to the city manager. And I'm guessing that the Director of Public Works reports to the city manager. Am I wrong? Okay. So I do think that they're, that that's something I'm gonna ask staff to explore further. There, there really should be more of a checks and balances there. And what that looks like, you know, I don't, I don't know that every-
We're certainly open to suggestion, because we haven't, we thought a lot about this. And we haven't thought of any mechanism that allows us to meet the shot clock for appeals. So we're, but we're open to suggestions.
Well, I mean, the, I heard the comment about the city council's agendas are full. Our agendas are full. There are, but you know, there's, the ability to have special meetings. Maybe a committee can be created, and they are only called upon if there's an appeal on a monthly basis. But I just, I think that, I do think it seems like it's, you know, the fact that you have to ask for the, well, I'll get into that in a minute. But I think that the idea of going to the city manager, escalating it to the city manager, and it all being still pretty private, is just not very transparent. So, so maybe forming a committee, maybe having a special meeting, similar to ARC, where it's a monthly meeting. If there's no items on the agenda, then it would get canceled. But something where the public would have an opportunity to weigh in. And then timing, it says, "All appeals must be filed within two business days of the written decision of the director." Same thing, I mean, I know this is more in the carrier, but two business days is not much at all. I think that, I thought there was, I don't know the exact law. I just know in one field, you need to have, under California law, at least five days just for the mailing. So something to just look into and see if that's enough time. So the 50 feet, I have listened to everybody, and I think I'm changing my opinion on the 50 feet. And I'm pretty flexible on 35 or 50, just to be, just be consistent on it, whatever it is. B, temporary wireless facilities, this is on page 11. And this is under B, the second sentence. It says, "Any temporary wireless facilities placed pursuant to this section must be removed within 15 days after the date the emergency is lifted." So the 15 days, I just, I guess, clarify, who establishes when the emergency is lifted? Is that the carrier or the city? So maybe just to identify who would be the actual agency that makes that determination. And then, and then the next section, breach termination of permit. It says, "For breach, a wireless permit may be revoked for failure." And I put here that it may be revoked by who? So would it be by the Director of Public Works? So just to be clear, who would be revoking? And then it goes on to say, "Upon revocation, the wireless facility must be removed." And I would recommend a timeframe. So within 30 calendar days, 15 calendar days, whatever the city thinks is, based on your experience, what's reasonable to actually have the removal. So that the carrier's following some timeline. And then, and the last one is just on the conditional approvals. Subject to any applicable limitations in federal or state law, and I think the section is intended to limit the director's authority to conditionally approve an eligible facility's request to protect and promote health and safety. So I just, I thought of, in reading this, there was actually an article that came up that, you know, when we were looking at these, it was, it's clear that you can't consider the cancer implications. And I was very clear on that. But last week, I just wanted to state for the record that on March 18th, 2019, the Modesto B did an editorial. And if you haven't heard, I just want to read a, two paragraphs from it. It says, "It's not proven that five current and former students of Weston Elementary and three teachers got cancer from a Sprint cellular tower put on the ripon school 10 years ago." So five students and three teachers. "As some parents suspect, their concerns first raised two years ago finally came to a head when 200 parents packed a recent school board meeting and some pulled their children from school and demanded transfers to other campuses." It goes on to say that the American Cancer Society seems to buy that, noting that anyone using a cellphone, nearly all of us, is exposed to many times more radiation than someone near a tower. However, the same American Cancer Society also says, "It's not clear how cellphone towers and towers might be able to cause cancer, and research in this area continues." And the California Department of Public Health says, "Research suggests long-term, high cellphone use may impact human health. But the California Brain Tumor Association insists that the jury is actually back and it has given its guilty verdict. We are convinced that the science on global basis is far more definitive than the claims by industry and government agencies imply." So there's clearly an issue happening right now in Modesto. We don't know how it's gonna work out. This has just happened since this, you know, since this item has come before us. But what I do want to make sure of is that, should there be a new law, should there be something that changes, that we can immediately make changes to ensure that the public's health is the most important thing that we're looking at, and not, not be in fear that we're gonna be sued. So this just highlights some of the issues, I think, that we've seen coming before us. And then just, I just have a little list of some things. So the, just to highlight, the 500-foot notice, whether that we're gonna, you know, agree to 35 or 50 foot as the standard. The maintenance issue, Commissioner Lithian brought up, that we, the, you know, if they don't clean up the graffiti, the city should clean it up and put the cost on the utility carrier, you know, whoever, but the third party. I do want to suggest that there, that the applications and the responses be public, and that along with the public on the website, that there be a map of towers as they're placed, so that the public can actually see where they're placed, as they're being placed with, or within 30 days, something that's reasonable for staff. I do believe that school, that if there's a tower on schools, that everybody that attends that school should be notified. I am a parent of a child that attends a public school in San Bruno. I would want to know. And I do believe the cost should be put on the carrier. I don't think the school district should be able to, should have to take on that cost. The contractor, and I also liked the idea that, I think it was Ms. Mazzola brought up, but this idea of the contractor certifying at their expense a certain period of time, that the RFP hasn't changed. It's still within the legal limits. So the law doesn't require that, but I'm gonna ask council to see if we can require that as part of our ordinance. And then I just, and I already mentioned that it would be great to have the applications and the responses publicly available. And just out of curiosity, how many applications are waiting right now? About, approximately?
There's been no new applications submitted since January. So we're still dealing with the same ones from CBR Group in Verizon.
Okay. Thank you. And I, and I do also just want to commend staff. Again, this is a great start. So I know you're gonna have to look at it again before it goes to city council, but thank you. It's clear that you've taken into consideration a lot of what we've talked about. And it's also clear that we're very limited by the law on what can be done. But if we can try to make it more public by placing them on the website, by placing the responses on the website, and a map with where all the towers are, I think that would be really helpful. Oh, and, and an appeal that's not to the city manager. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So I'm gonna turn it back over to staff for next steps.
We are going to type up all your comments.
Yeah.
And get this to the city council. We don't have a confirmed date, but we are looking at both April dates, and we're working hard to get it there to ensure we're in compliance when the order goes into effect.
Through the general. I know that for city council to receive the packet, they've got to have this information in advance of next Tuesday night. So is there a possibility, is the question-
Oh, wow. Next week?
Next week.
April.
So it's huge taxing on staff, and they'll do whatever it takes, including doing all-nighters. But it would be, if it's not too difficult, I would like to ask if you would consider writing up your comments or highlighting them so that they can be, have that support of, of having those, you know, your valuable comments input. So you're not trying to just go on interpretation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That we're email-
Good suggestion. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'll throw out, thank you very much for that suggestion. So having worked with a variety of different departments, I mean, we've got four people here working on it, one outside council. It would actually be very helpful to have you, all of your comments, or whichever ones you wish to submit, sent to us in Word or in an email, so that we can copy and paste those comments and then respond to them, so that we don't have to spend the time re-typing everybody's comments. That, that would be wonderful. And it, it seems like that might be a reasonable thing to ask, since most of you appear to have those, those comments written anyway. So that would be great. Thank you very much.
Also, Michael did send out a message, an email to all of us to ask our comments to be submitted to him in advance of today. So thank you, Michael. I'm sorry for, I know that I wasn't one to send my comments to you.
Okay. So last call for comments on this item? No? Okay, we're gonna close this item and go to five, city staff discussion.
We are looking for members for the April 11th Architectural Review Committee meeting. So please check your calendars. Raise your hand. No? Yeah?
The reason I can't raise my hand is that I'll be out of the country.
Yes, thank you so much. As some of you let me know your absences in advance, that's very helpful, so that we can ensure a quorum.
Absolutely.
Do we have a member? Yes. Okay, Commissioner Legasse, thank you.
What was the date again?
April 11th.
Hello. Okay.
I can make it.
Chair Mason, thank you.
I can be there as well.
Commissioner Lithine, thank you so much. I just have one brief announcement. And all this information is on the website and widely distributed on Nextdoor, Channel One. But I just want to update you on the streetscape really quickly, because I left at your places the information about our next drop-in pop-up community workshop. And so we finalized that date, so I want to make the official announcement that it will be held on Saturday, March 30th. It's a drop-in from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We had our first workshop, which was actually a workshop, on March 12th. And I, I know it was on a weekday, early in the morning, 10:00 a.m. And that was really geared towards business owners. And I want to say, we got a lot of great business owners. We got 37 community members, including Commissioner Hamilton and Commissioner Morgan. And it was great. It was, there were a wide spectrum of creative ideas provided, that really would help us, that will help us. And so I want to thank everyone. But I also hope that you can help spread the word, because I know you're active in the community, about this drop-in pop-up workshop, which is on a Saturday, so geared towards a little bit different audience, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And that, anyone can just drop by. It's at Citibank Plaza. If, assuming it doesn't rain. If it rains, we have to move inside to the Entrepreneur Center. But at the workshop, the purpose of that is to put out boards, kind of like we had the in-community engagement small wireless session, and get feedback on the streetscape plan. And so we really encourage you to participate. We are also doing stakeholder interviews, March 28th. And if you know anyone in the community who can make that date, it is, again, sort of a weekday interview with the consultants. We are looking for anyone you think might be a business owner. And we will certainly reach out to the business owners that we, that we heard tonight, because sometimes the newer business owners are, are great at participating. But that will be held on March 28th during the day from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 with city staff and the consultants. So we're also doing a lot of sort of- So we're also doing a lot of sort of alternative community input, like there's a, there's a, there's a survey, which anyone can do online, that's on our website. So if you're, if you can all get the word out about this, that would just be great. Because I think more so than a lot of projects you see, the, the downtown streetscape, the avenue, is really a community resource. So it's much like the exercise we went through with the Recreation Aquatic Center, where it's, it's everyone's sort of living room, if you will, and we really want to make it spectacular. I don't know the exact date of when that's coming to you, but that would be the next step after this community open house, is to come to you for a study session. And it will come back to you before it goes to the council one more time.
For the stakeholder interviews, who would, who do people contact? I guess if business owners are interested-
Yeah, so they, we have an excellent project manager, Ruchidande, and her contact information's all on this website. And much like small cell, we have a really easy-to-remember website, which is thecitywebsite/streetscape.
Okay.
It's on the, it's on the flyer.
Great, thank you. Okay, planning commission discussion?
Through the chair. I, I think I'll only take 30 seconds on this. I just want to acknowledge, I won't go into the details, but we went to the planning, planning, planners' commission, they changed the name, Academy, and with Commissioner Lithian. And it was really fabulous. Thank you for the opportunity. It was a wealth of information. I've been to several of them, but I hadn't been to one in more than 10 years, and it was absolutely wonderful. I walk away with the importance of an evacuation plan for our city. And based on all the fires, they really emphasized, I had a lot of keynote speakers, and what takes place with that. But based on the time, I don't, it doesn't warrant, I don't know that anybody could have listened at this late, late hour, but it was absolutely worth it.
Through the chair. Just to chime in on that, it, it was super valuable. I think it's great that Commissioner Johnson has been here nearly 30 years, and I think was the most experienced commissioner at the conference. And she got, I think, standing ovation. It was pretty awesome. And I was one of the new ones, and I think there was, there was material there that was super valuable to both of us. Me being new and her being so experienced, and we walked away with a lot of really good information. And if you go to the League of Cities website, all of their presenters', slideshows, and information is available through their website. And it's late, so I'll stop, but thank you, it was very worthwhile.
Just have a question. I'm just looking at the March 30th date. Is that the same day as the Florida Avenue? And is that something we can announce to?
So I do not know that that date is official for Florida Avenue.
It was posted by Javon.
It is in the morning, and it does not conflict with this.
Okay, thank you. I just did want to thank the city. I noticed that Javon posted all those meetings actually on Nextdoor, which is great. And then I did want, I've been looking at the bylaws, and I know at some point, Mark mentioned that they, that we might look at them. I don't know if we still will, that was a while ago. But I was going to see if there's a way to put in ARC update as a part of the regular agenda so that we know it was covered. And commissioners can report back to the rest of the commission on what was covered and what was decided. It could be a short five-minute update, but just so we know.
And we can certainly do that for the bylaws. The good news is, you don't have to wait for that to happen, to do it anyway. You can certainly cover that under Commissioner Comments, because the ARC members are commissioners. So somebody can simply make a short report if that seems appropriate.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. It is 11 o'clock, meeting's adjourned.